Across the state, it was only repaid to those school districts in deciles one through three.
So, basically, are you saying that the governor didn't hold up his end of the deal?
I think that's a fair statement.
In the past, Luz, with regard to these cuts, in particular, current year proposed cuts to our current year budget, can the current year deficit factor be imposed unilaterally by the governor?
Yes, he left a footnote in his proposed budget saying, first thing I will do is take from categoricals and then if there isn't enough in those categoricals, then comes a deficit factor. The expectation is that he will be negotiating, the administration, the governor's administration will be negotiating with the legislature to determine what that looks like ultimately.
But for the current year, it is possible that even without legislative action, the governor could take back these funds?
That's correct. For second interim, the DART board, it's called, it's provided by School Services of California, they set the COLAs and that's what the county expects us to use and we will be assuming a 0.5 percent deficit factor in the current year.
So with that in mind, when do we have to, and we're hearing an informational report tonight, with that in mind and with the fact that you'll get a school services report that we'll have to base our assumptions on, when will we be having to make any budget cuts?
That's a good question. I'd like to finish going through the rest of the picture so everyone knows what exactly the big picture looks like in terms of the revenues we will not be receiving from the state and then we can get back to that one.
David? Luz, can I ask you to expand, this was the governor's proposal, the legislative analyst wants to recalculate Prop 98, could I ask you to amplify on that and the ramifications moving forward?
Sure.
As a contrast?
It's estimated currently that the Prop 98 appropriation in the current year is over-appropriated. For school districts, fixing that over-appropriation doesn't feel like anything, it doesn't feel like a cut. The reason it doesn't feel like a cut is because it's based on ADA and/or COLA that isn't there. So none of us were counting on these dollars, it's just the state essentially overestimated the amount of money that we would be guaranteed by Prop 98. So taking that money off the table doesn't impact a school district, doesn't hurt a school district. And then, of course, what happens is by lowering the Prop 98 guarantee in the current year, it lessens the amount in the subsequent year. If we stick with the over-appropriation, then the governor has to build based on that as the minimum guarantee and continue to grow from there. In the case of what the governor is proposing, and in his speech when he presented the proposed budget, he essentially said he didn't want to hurt school districts in the current year. He recognized that mid-year spending reductions for public agencies, particularly those that serve young kids, is just not acceptable. It's not acceptable in the current year, but I think seems to be acceptable in the subsequent years, as far as I can tell from his proposed budget. And any, in either one of those scenarios, we take the brunt of the reduction, the brunt of the hit in the subsequent year, and that's what sort of allows us sometime presumably to plan for it. Though I do have to point out, it's January and we're learning of this now. While we had hints that we could expect a deficit in the next year, those hints were nowhere close to a 6.99 percent deficit factor. You may recall, at first interim, I presented sort of some bad-case scenarios that weren't fully funded and showed what the impact to our ending fund balance would be if the deficit factor, if there was a deficit factor applied and we only received 3 percent COLA or a 2 percent COLA. That's still receiving a COLA, it's nowhere close to a deficit factor of 6.99 percent. Now, I want to elaborate on a couple of other pieces which are important for our budget, and that's special education. The governor is proposing to sort of apply that 4.94 percent estimated statutory COLA and then cut it by almost 11 percent. Almost 11 percent. Now, let's think about that. What do we see happen every year in special education? We see our costs go up and not nearly at the level that our revenue goes up. So by, if he were just to give us COLA, that's not enough to find what we need to find in special education. By applying the COLA along with a deficit factor of almost 11 percent, that's essentially saying, go ahead and backfill. You pay for the increase, is what he's telling school districts. For us, that's $285,000. I believe Roslin might be behind me at this point, and I'm sure she would agree with me that cutting $285,000 out of the special education budget would be a rather difficult task. Those costs tend to grow over years. Grow. The chances of even maintaining current spending are small. The idea of cutting it by almost $300,000 is out of the question. This puts the state actually in a questionable position in that the state is proposing to spend less on special education next year than they did this year. And that goes contrary to a federal requirement. We have a federal requirement called Maintenance of Effort, which says, in short, you must spend more money next year than you did this year on special education. It's pretty much what it says. The state is proposing to cut special education and therefore would not be meeting the special federal Maintenance of Effort requirement. And so it is worrying those in the education field in terms of what other federal dollars could be put in jeopardy because of not meeting the federal Maintenance of Effort requirement.
Is not the Maintenance of Effort requirement directed at districts, not states? So the state's position would be that districts still have to put that same amount of dollars towards special education, we're not telling you where it's coming from, but would that, is it not the fact that it is our Maintenance of Effort that is required, not the state's?
I believe it actually goes up the chain. It starts off with school districts and then it goes up to the SLPA, and I believe it also goes up to the state.
Okay.
The states allocate those dollars for specific purposes.
And is it possible that they're defined as deferred revenue and therefore they're still saying that they're increasing but it will be paid at a later date? And in fact, the catch-up clause will eventually allow them to argue that they have actually increased it, they just haven't paid it currently?
They just haven't paid it. Interesting. That would be very interesting to see if that were the state's argument. A couple of more pretty significant hits for school districts, and I heard somebody say today, once they start hitting some of these programs, you know the state's in bad shape. They're taking hits of almost $200 million to child development, $60 million to before and after-school programs, $14 million to child nutrition, and another $1.1 billion across categorical programs.
Could you amplify that for Alameda?
Sure. For Alameda, let's see, for child development, actually for child development and for child nutrition, actually, I'm going to take that back, I cannot give you dollar amounts, but I can tell you that any of these decreases are going to be felt in part by the general fund. We know that the Child Nutrition Fund is now self-sustaining, just barely got themselves in that position last year. Taking a hit is going to obviously put them back on shakier grounds than they were last year and when we last saw their multi-year projection. For child development, that's not currently a self-sustaining fund, and so any hit to the Child Development Fund would come with a cut in services and/or a contribution from the general fund.
Now, across-the-board reductions, is that $1.1 million to us?
Probably, actually, I would guess a little bit less than that. We don't receive all of the dollars that go into the $1.1 billion, and the governor didn't state in his budget proposal, these are the programs that are going to get hit, these are the ones that are not going to get hit. So we don't know if it's an across-the-board, we don't know if it's going to be weighted, we really don't have a sense. For all I know, he might be setting out to protect some of the programs that he just established last year.
So we're looking at over $5 million though, just so far?
I got to about $4.5 million.
Okay.
Yeah. One more piece that I do want to share is one that's very important to our cash flow. A few years ago, when the state was in a similar predicament, they took our June principal apportionment, which just means one of our big payments that we received from the state for the money that they're going to give us across 12 months, they give us a big payment in June, the state, for the sake of making themselves look slightly better off financially, chose not to pay us in June, and they held on to that money and said, we're not going to give it to school districts until July. That caused some cash flow problems for school districts, especially in that very first year. It means the state gets to earn interest on dollars instead of the school districts, and it makes the June payroll process a little more difficult, since we know many of our employees actually receive two paychecks in the month of June. And paying two paychecks in the month of June when you're not receiving your payments from the state can become a little difficult. The state has now proposed, or the governor has proposed, to take that June payment, which is now deferred to July, and hold on to it again until the September. To just keep holding on to dollars that are supposed to go to school districts for as long as they possibly can, which again results in some significant cash flow problems to school districts, and that's not just us, that's school districts across the nation, or across the state, as well as lost opportunities for interest earnings that now the state will reap the benefits of and we will not. There were no dollars allocated for equalization aid, so there are no attempts to put us up to that 90th percentile, and we know that we're on the lower side of funded districts. And there were also no dollars other than $38,000 allocated for mandate reimbursement. So why $38,000? There are a grand total of 38 mandates, those are 38 items that are services that school districts must provide per the state constitution. We're supposed to be reimbursed for those dollars, so the governor proposes to fund $1,000 for each one of those mandates. That $1,000 appropriation is enough to mandate us to provide the service, but clearly not enough to actually reimburse us for providing the service. If the governor did not propose any funding for those 38 mandates, we would not be required to follow them. By appropriating $1,000, we have to follow all of them. One more. Charter schools are actually going to take a hit this time in the governor's budget. They will also receive a deficit factor both on their general purpose block grant as well as the categorical block grant. So that it actually totals about $197 per ADA of a hit that charter schools will take, which will be new for them, as they did not take a hit the last time we had a deficit factor applied.
Luz, just going back to the mandate reimbursement, what would be the total dollars if we were fully funded on mandate reimbursements?
Depends on the year. It's anywhere between $300,000 to $500,000, and the fluctuation is mostly due to collective bargaining. We don't do collective bargaining in all year, so it's, in those years, we tend to have higher amounts.
So we're being paid roughly less than one-tenth of all of our costs every year? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mike?
Just so that we can, your handout actually spells it out for the, but you didn't really, you sort of summed it up by saying the $4 million in ongoing revenues that would be potentially lost in the upcoming fiscal year, I just wanted to put a number on it so people can understand it. Currently, in our current year, we are receiving $5,777 per student, and what the net-net of the governor's proposed budget is doing is actually saying that next year, we would be funded at a level of 5,000, whoops.
641.
What is it?
5,641.
5,641, so we're actually having a decrease of $130 per student, so that's really what they're saying. The net-net of what they're proposing is an actual reduction year-over-year of funding per student for our schools.
Meanwhile, we have step and column increases, we have already negotiated increases with our employees, we, I know although it's not as much as it could have been, but electricity increases, insurance increases.
Tracy?
Were you going to mention the schedule?
Yes. I am in contact with the county. Obviously, we're not the only school district in this county in this predicament now where we have to make assumptions regarding our budget that would call for some pretty significant reductions, just so we can follow what we've done in the past. In the past, we've planning spending reductions and identifying them from August through January and come February, we present them to the board for approval to then send off to the county. We're in January. So it's looking like the county will be expecting something from us, not as a second interim, which I said there's, it would be impossible to meet a deadline of second interim, but something to go along with budget adoption. So this will present some challenges when it comes to preparing our second interim report, as our second interim report would be negative if we didn't have appropriate, an appropriate plan to make adjustments to our spending and/or our revenue to make sure that our 3 percent reserve was in place.
The thing that we have to also recognize, and I know this is, this is the doomsday scenario, I suppose, or the gloom and doom one, this is also a negotiated process and this is like act one of the process, and act two will come out in May when the governor's revise comes out. In the meantime, the legislature will attempt to come up with their own version of the truth, and then they actually have to pass a budget. In the prior cycle, 2003, I believe it was, the governor's proposal was pretty close, not as bad as, but it was pretty close, ended up being something less than that. So even, we're going to end up with having to follow the county DART board and all the rest. So how, we're going to end up creating, we're going to have to adopt a budget in June is probably the big issue, and there's probably still not going to have anywhere near a number. So we're just, is that how we end up having to make our budget assumptions are based on this DART board report?
That's correct. So come second interim, the multi-year projection that will be completed will be based on the DART board that's currently available, which shows the deficit factor of 6.99 percent for the budget year, as well as the half a percent deficit factor in the current year.
Because I think in the 2000, the last legislation, when they recognized they couldn't, the last time they actually had mid-year cuts and whatever, and they ended up with no mid-year cuts for the prior year, '02, '03, and then a zero COLA, and ended up, that's the year the governor got us to sign the deal, and they changed all the rules. But they also passed the rule that basically allowed school districts to end up doing half of, one and a half percent reserves.
Right.
So, once again, that's a pretty ugly situation, but it's another one of those things. So in terms, so this is all just really nice, on top of all the other national economic news that we're getting. What should we be telling the people out there to do in terms of contacting or communicating to their elected officials in terms of this, so that we can at least register some level of protest, I suppose?
That's a great question. I can say, and I guarantee you every other CFO, or just about every other CFO in any school district in this state is saying, we can't take this level of a hit in one year without some sort of planning in advance. Unfortunately, the governor has hit every other sector in the state's agencies across. So while we feel in education, we can't sustain this sort of reduction, there is every other sector saying the same. I imagine there's, it doesn't allow for much collaboration building across groups when all of us are going to start fighting for the crumbs, and that's what we're looking at. So anything folks can do to talk to their elected representatives about what this impact is going to be for Alameda Unified specifically, the piece that's in the board packet is also available on our website. And I provided quite a bit more detail than I normally do in preparing this document, and that's because I thought it was very important for folks to see the way we were going to hit, be hit with this deficit factor, and that, one, it's a loss of new money, and two, it's a loss of current dollars.
So, but the one, the one piece of the thing that's, the governor's cleverly sort of taken off the table that's really not, it still needs to be part of the discussion though, is that he's focusing strictly on the expense side.
That's right.
And in fact, I mean, I don't know how many people are going to be willing to advocate increases in revenue, which is a code word for increasing taxes, by the way, in case you're not paying attention. But in fact, it's a revenues, there's both a revenue and an expense side to government. So to the extent that there, if you're looking to propose solutions to your elected officials, if you truly believe that we can't take the expense cuts, what you're really going to end up having to advocate for, by the way, is an increase in revenues. And what those revenues are, I'll let you out there and decide, but in fact, it's really about number, it's increasing the revenues for the state, because those revenues drive the expense formulas. So if we can't take the cuts, then we have to basically advocate for, you know, bringing back the vehicle license fee tax, changing Prop 13, whatever it is, whatever you guys want to come up with. But we're sort of stuck in the middle, all we can do is follow whatever happens up there, so.
I'd like to add that at the state level, I was recently at a meeting for superintendents on a briefing, and there is the Education Coalition that's been established that is made up of California school boards, the CTA, the CSEA, and employee groups as well that are also linking with some of the other groups in terms of the nurses, the police, health services, et cetera. So there is movement at the state level to bring people, to try to bring people together around the issues.
So a couple of things, on January the 8th, the governor said, we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. Actually, previous year, revenues declined 4.9 billion. I'd say we have a revenue problem as well as a spending problem. So yes, we need to advocate for lowering that reserve as a temporary mitigation of impact, but what worries me is that right now, your best estimate is four and a half million dollars to Alameda Unified. A year ago, we were sitting here wrestling with a mere 1.4 million in cuts that happened, so anything more now is on top of that. So let's say they compromise at two and a quarter million. It's still going to be ugly, it's still going to be brutal, and I think we need to look within our own community. I don't think we, I know we can't wait for the state. I mean, a lot of talk that the governor's put out his worst-case scenario so that his arm gets twisted into reluctantly accepting some revenue increase, some tax increase, as Mike said, but maybe its vehicle license fee comes back again, whatever. But even if that does, it's not going to solve the problem, we are still looking at cuts, we're going to be looking at ugly cuts, and we need to look within our community to ourselves to mitigate, to offset, to keep the school system we want to have.
Any other questions, comments? I'd ask your indulgence to say a few words, Luz, I have no more questions. After listening to Martin Luther King's words earlier, I want to start off my comments with the same hope for our educational future, and also the same desire for everyone within the Alameda community to rise up and take back more local control of our public education. We have already heard the financial forecast for AUSD by our CFO. It is not a pretty picture, and it's not just AUSD. You've seen the headlines of many newspapers stating the reductions that will be felt across every district in the state. You already know from the global headlines and the financial news, anyone watched the market today, that the near-term outlook for the economy, both federal and state, does not look like it will turn around quickly. So it does not look like the cavalry will arrive anytime soon. It is at times like these that communities such as ours have to make some sacrifices for the greater public good, and there is no greater good than the education of the children of Alameda. They will be the voters, the decision-makers, and the leaders of tomorrow. If we do not educate them well enough to participate in the 21st century, it will be a loss for us all. This will require a lot of hard work from all of us, and maybe some near-term sacrifices. My simple question is, how much is a good public education worth to the community of Alameda? Not only to the tangible values such as property, but also the social values as well. I challenge all the members of this community to speak with one voice, not only to our legislators and representatives, to continue to support full funding of public education, but also to each other to do whatever is needed to continue seeing AUSD excel, even if it means supplementing it from our own pockets, as we have done through contributions, bond measures, and parcel taxes. It is a critical time to come together to find the best choices in an increasingly difficult educational environment. Thank you. With that said, we'll move to item G4. We'll have a public hearing on Renaissance Leadership Academy, called a public hearing.
The way we are going to address this is to first have Mandy Tham, the lead petitioner for the Renaissance Leadership Academy, do a presentation and overview regarding the charter petition, and then open it to a public hearing. So, Ms. Tham?
Good evening, Superintendent Daley and members of the board. My name is Mandy Tham, and I'm the lead petitioner for Renaissance Leadership Academy, and I appreciate the opportunity this evening to speak to everyone about our vision for Renaissance Leadership Academy. How do I do it? Our name is part of who we are. When we think about the Renaissance era, immediately to many minds comes the great art that came out of the Renaissance era, but also associated with the Renaissance era was the era, the beginning of sea exploration, math, science advancements, and various other advancements. It was a period of discovery, and this is the focus and this is the energy that we're bringing to Renaissance Leadership Academy. Why leadership, the whole focus of our vision for our The whole focus of our vision for our students is leadership. So, let us begin. Maybe not? There we go. Renaissance Leadership Academy is a small kindergarten through eighth grade school that will serve, to begin with, 105 students in grades K through three, and sixth grade students, and then over time, filling to our full capacity of 205 students. It is small by design because our program requires that we all have this small community approaching the learning of our students. We are traditional, we are a learning community. We are looking to locate in the west end of Alameda, as I mentioned in a memo that I sent last week, which, regrettably, I did not acknowledge you as the current president, and I regret that. It was one more thing addressed to Mr. Forbes. We are currently working with Mario Mariani and with Don Lindsay, both of Gallagher and Lindsay, in helping us to refine, define, find the appropriate location for us in the west end of Alameda. Mario is working with us, looking at Marina Village, Alameda Point, looking at Coast Guard property on McKay Avenue, exploring any and all opportunities that are out there that will be available to us, that will serve our community. When people talk about Alameda Point, we, it's a big place. And for those students in the early grades, we are looking for something that is, if it's at Alameda Point, that is in close enough proximity for parents who like to walk their children to school, we'll still have that available to them. The locations that I have mentioned are all served by bus lines in addition, so public transportation is available to them. So as we move on. The qualifications of the charter petitioners. Let's talk about the lead petitioners. As I said at the point of introduction, I'm Mandy Tham. I have had 20 years in education. I served eight years as an elementary school teacher, and was in elementary administration for seven years. And then for the last six years, I've been associated with Cal State East Bay. I have a multi-subject credential as well as an administrative credential. I have a master's degree in administrative services, as well as a master's degree in math education. My colleague Julie Thomas, who is the co-founder of Renaissance Leadership Academy, has 19-plus years in education, serving both as an elementary school teacher and as an administrator, roughly paralleling my own experience. She has two, two credentials, one in, one is a multi-subject, one is a single subject in English, and she also has a master's degree in administrative services. The educators who have worked with us in the development of this charter petition present to you 15-plus years in education, multi-subject credentials, special education credentials. I know I should be reading this because I'm doing them a major disservice in not being able to list their notable accomplishments in education. So briefly, what we're looking at is, in addition to the multi-subject credentials, we're looking at reading specialists, special education credential, teaching-to-the-learning handicap specialists, music specialists, and a master's in private school administration. Our launch board, we've got Chimera Atkinson, who brings with her 11 years of experience organizing and managing all levels of accounting, from day-to-day operations to year-end financial statements. Additionally, Chimera has 10 years in payroll and human resources. What did I do? I'll move along and you catch up. How's that?
I think maybe if the computer you're controlling is over there, maybe if you try pointing at that.
Should I be pointing it at you? Ah! Thank you. Thank you. Rosemary Changson has worked for 15 years as both a financial and policy analyst in the public sector. She currently works at UC, Office of the President, immediately in the office of the Executive Vice President in charge of business operations. I've given you the background of both myself and Julie Thomas. Denise Topp has been practicing law since 2005. Her areas of specialty are general civil and trial practices in all state and federal courts, with an emphasis on insurance defense, insurance litigation, business litigation, employment law, sexual harassment, personal injury appellate law, and premise liability. We've been very fortunate to gather these group of professionals to work with us. Now let's look at the school. One of the key components of Renaissance Leadership Academy is our Student Success Plan. Every student at Renaissance has a Student Success Plan or SSP that serves as a tool for us to be able to monitor and to modify each and every student's progress academically and socially to allow them to reach their own personal best. Our vision is that the Renaissance students of today are the leaders of tomorrow. Accountability to parents, students, and the community. In addition to the SSP, we use many modes of internal and external assessment to guide us in the process of evaluating and providing the best educational experience for our students. We have the traditional, we have tests, we have portfolios that contain artifacts demonstrating what the students have learned, running records where the students are reading progressively through, and journals where students have, have an opportunity to demonstrate their, their writing skills and to articulate their ideas. Projects, the big idea projects, that allow students to spend more time in developing what is the overarching ideas surrounding many of the concepts. Teacher observations play a key role. Progress reports midterm for each of the quarters. Midterm, there's a progress report that communicates to the parents the progress of their students at the end of each quarter, and we will be on the quarter system as opposed to the trimester. There, there is a report card, and conferences should, and conferences, both the conferences that are associated with the report cards, with SSPs, and those conferences that are needed as a basis for us to maintain those open channels of communication with the parents. As far as external assessment goes, we will be participating in the STAR program, but Renaissance will participate in this program twice yearly. We will participate in the fall and use that as an internal assessment to improve student performance throughout the year. And in the fall, we will, we will be participating in the language arts reading and mathematics portion. It will not be a full battery of testing. And then we will participate in the full battery in the Spring STAR, which is used to further evaluate our progress and to help us determine, are we meeting our goals for our student performance improvement plan? What do we need to do to always stay on top of it? We are a learning community, the entire community. And we're a community of stakeholders. We have one goal in common, and that is to work collaboratively in the best interest of each student and to support each student's pursuit of his or her personal best. To help us achieve this goal, we have what we call a commitment to excellence. Our students will sign a commitment to excellence, affirming and acknowledging that they will come to school prepared, ready to learn, that they will demonstrate our core values, that they will apply themselves in everything they do, and that they will apply themselves to their home studies as well, including that 20 minutes of reading at night in addition to regular homework. Our parents, as primary caregivers for their children, they also sign a commitment to excellence in terms of supporting their students, their own children, and creating an environment for them to study at home, having that open communication with members of the school community so that we're always in dialogue in the event that they have any issues before they become major concerns. And participating to the limits that they can, whether it's volunteerism, attending meetings, and things of that nature. And our staff signs a commitment to excellence. So we're all bound together by our commitments for our children. And the staff commitment is to always have the highest standards, to make learning accessible to all students, to have the open communication with parents, and to work diligently towards our common goal for our children. We go through how learning best occurs. Learning requires engagement. It's not a spectator sport. We do everything in our power, and our ed plan is written to actively engage our student in the learning process. Learning is developmental. Our expectations are, have to meet the reality of where our students are. We must take them where they are and guide them to where the goal is. Learning is real. We try to keep our experiences as real as possible and connected one to another. Learning is rigorous, as opposed to a spectator sport. I mean, they're actively involved in this. It occurs everywhere. It's not in the exclusive domain of the classroom. It occurs everywhere, and for students to see that the learning is going on, on an ongoing basis, in all different venues, is an important sensitivity for them to develop. It involves the big idea. Students will have the opportunity to work on projects where they explore, take some of the basic ideas, and be able to delve more deeply in them to come to understand what is the big overarching idea that is, surrounds these, these ideas. Learning involves reflection. As an adminis, as a supervisor, and for Cal State East Bay, one of the things that we require of our student teachers is reflection. You're in there, you're teaching. After your teaching experience, sit down and reflect on it. What went well, what didn't go well, how can I improve this the next time around? It's not just the student teachers who need to reflect on their work. We all need to have that opportunity to stand back, to reflect, and to help us to incorporate it into our schema of understanding. Learning involves articulation, whether it's in the written mode or verbally. Einstein is purported to have said, "You don't fully understand a concept unless you can explain it to your grandmother." So, the more refined you can become in your articulation skills, so that you can explain it to your grandmother. It's a good thing. So, as I mentioned earlier, project-based, there'll be multiple opportunities throughout the year for students to participate in projects, whether they're individual projects or group-based projects. It's an opportunity to extend on the learning that is going on, on a day-to-day basis. School-wide theme for the year. Once we get to full enrollment, as a rite of passage, the seventh-grade students will have an opportunity to pick the theme for the upcoming year. And it's not one of those, you know, Mrs. Tham gives you the assignment tonight, and you come in tomorrow morning and say, "Ah, hi, got it." It's got to be broad-based, across the curriculum. It's got to be something that a kindergarten can participate in, just as well as an eighth grader can participate in it. So, and it's got to be sustainable, something that we can look at and enjoy through the qua, through the course of the year. Another strategy that we use is group setting. There'll be multiple opportunities through the course of any day for students to work collectively in solving problems and discussions, in working on tasks. And these groups will be reconstituted regularly so that students have the opportunity to work with a variety of students. Flexible group. Students will have the opportunity, and our emphasis, we have the strongest emphasis on our K through three program where reading is really something that we have to bring our students up to their fullest potential in. But in reading and in other core disciplines, if students are performing above or below those in their, in their class, they will have the opportunity to move to a class that's more appropriate for them. And this will be going on in such a way that it's not going to be disruptive. It's, it is going to be an opportunity for us to find the appropriate setting for all students so that they will have the best opportunity. Differentiated instruction. Teachers will use best practices. Cater to the multiple intelligences. Listen to their students, learn from their students, and approach their students in a way that allows their students to become engaged and be part of the learning process at all times. Reading/writing buddies, whether you're third or fourth graders, you're down there in the first and second, in kindergarten and first grade, you're reading to the kindergartners, you're writing with the first graders, so that these burgeoning skills that they're developing, you're refining your own and you're supporting them. Technology. We view technology to be a tool that will enhance the learning programs. It's a, it's a tool that will, that our students will use in many ways to, to further their own educational development. Library, print media, it's part of how students look at research, in addition, how we provide time and opportunity for the students in the early primary grades to, to listen to Storytime, to pick out those books for Dare. Community outreach, this is another cornerstone of our programs at Renaissance Leadership Academy. Community outreach is built right into our program. We have a community outreach council in addition to our student council. And the entire community will participate in this. And one of the features of the community outreach will be our outreach garden. Preparation for life in a complex and diverse society, whether they're serving on councils, whether they're serving as tutors or mentors to learn how to deal with one another, to grow to appreciate one's gifts and challenges, and learn how to support one another, is an important preparation for life in a complex and diverse society. Development, development of interpersonal and other skills, working in groups, taking on leadership roles. This is, once again, an opportunity for them to develop these, these skills that are valued in the workplace. Character development, social development of social skills, that's all part of the SSP as well as the academics, so that we will help our students in their development. And this rather sums it up. We recognize that our instructional design will not succeed without the active participation of all stakeholders. We're all in Renaissance for one reason, and we We're all in Renaissance for one reason, and we need to work collaboratively together to make it a success. As I mentioned earlier, we have the core values of balance, empathy, accommodation, and respect. Our students from kindergarten on learn the values. Our students of today are the leaders of tomorrow. You don't need to have a title to be a leader. You need to know what to do when it's time to do it. Our mission. Renaissance Leadership Academy community educates students who embrace learning, hunger for academic scholarship, practice wholesome living, and serve the complex needs of a diverse society. We've attempted to encompass in our, our mission statement what we view to be the education of the whole child. And in conclusion, as lead petitioner and my colleagues here, we offer you, and we bring to Renaissance Leadership Academy, our experience as site, in-site-based management, the ability to design and implement a business plan. We've worked site-based, site-based education plan, both the creation of and the working with parent boards. And finally, Renaissance Academy provides a choice for parents and achievement for students. And choice, when all is going well, is not something that people even need to consider. But if you, as the parent, and as the primary advocate for your child, are faced with that tough decision of saying, "This isn't working, and I need to explore my options," to have more choices for parents makes that journey that much more easy for them in a difficult time. So.
We'll open this to public hearing. All right. We'll just take speakers since this is a public hearing. You don't need a slip if you don't want. Since there are so few, I'll call it up based on the slips that makes, might make it easier.
Teach me to turn in a slip early. All right. I'm Rob Sultana, and I'm an Alameda parent and teacher, and I'm quite concerned about this proposed charter school. I have absolutely no doubt about the good intentions of the supporters of the charter, but I think as a matter of policy, we have to look at the effect of the policy, not just the intentions. We heard at the last meeting about the road, where road of good intentions might lead. But anyhow, by a conservative estimation, if the school grows from 100 to 200 students, it would have an impact on the remaining 9,000 AUSD, AUSD students of somewhere between several hundred thousand, up to a million dollars in budget cuts. In the Alameda Journal last Friday, Ms. Tham was quoted as asking the question, "If not now, when?" And I'd humbly suggest, as a matter of public policy, that when, there's a possibility of not just slowing a rate of increase of funding for the schools, but an actual absolute cut that when would be not this year, and maybe not next year, but also not never. So I, I know the board is precluded from considering the financial ramifications of the decision under California charter law as a basis for denying it, but I just want to repeat, my fundamental policy concern is that 9,000 other students are gonna bear this cost. And in this particular when, this could, every marginal dollar is critical, and this could shift us from sort of cataclysmic catastrophic budget cuts into apocalyptic or doomsday budget cuts, and I don't think that's hyperbole. On a much more technical, legalistic, kinda nitpicky point, I did read through the application. I know that the board recently denied a previous charter application. One of the bases for the previous denial was that it lacked a reasonably comprehensive description of the 16 required elements, including racial and ethnic balance. I know the supporters of this charter must be aware of the board's concerns about that with the previous charter proposal, both in the recruiting and the retention plans. In the application, I saw absolutely nothing addressing retention programs for underachieving students or traditionally low-performing groups. And the recruiting plan, and I may have missed something, appears to be five very vague sentences, which are probably, you know, well-intentioned, as I said before, but there doesn't seem to be a specific plan here to close the achievement gap, to have the student population reflect the demographics of the district as required under California charter law. So for that, both, those general reasons, and that, pardon my voice, those specific concerns I just raised, I urge you to look seriously and probably to deny this application. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Daley and members of the board. I'm Julie Thomas. I'm the co-founder of Renaissance Leadership Academy. And to connect with Martin Luther King's words that you mentioned earlier, Superintendent Daley, we couldn't be silent. And after 20 years in education, both Mandy Tham and I strongly and fervently believe that with a certain combination of best practices that are consistent in a certain climate and a certain environment, that regardless of the student population, you can help each and every student achieve. And that has been our mission and our dream in proposing this charter. And we thank you very much for your time and attention in considering it for Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Tham. You heard from my wife earlier. I'd like to give you a personal aspect of Renaissance Leadership Academy. Together, Mandy and I have raised four children, someone to public school, someone to non-public school. Why, you might ask. What is the best environment for each and, each individual child? We chose the best environment for each of our children so that they could get the best education possible. Renaissance Leadership Academy offers a choice. You get one chance to go through the third grade. You don't make it in the third grade, you're probably gonna get passed on and struggle through the fourth and maybe the fifth. You're gonna have a hard time catching up. If you have money, you can afford to send your child to Hed Royce, or St. Joe's, or Alameda Christian, or wherever you want. If you don't have money, you don't have choice. And if your child is stuck in a school where they're not doing well, what are you gonna do? Go to Renaissance Leadership Academy. Get in a different environment. Get in a more nurturing environment, if that's what your student needs, and let that student succeed. You only get one shot at education. We need to do this now. The budget problems are always gonna exist. They've existed in the past. That is no reason to deny a charter. That is no reason to deny a child a better education at that point in his life when he has only one opportunity to get that education. I urge you to approve this for the sake of those children that will benefit from Renaissance Leadership Academy, the leadership and the programs that they will bring to students in Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Trish Spencer, and I have two kids that attend Lincoln Middle School. And I am supporting this Renaissance Charter School. And I know Susan Linney, I think many of you do, she was a parent volunteer at Earhart. She taught kindergarten music, and when Woodstock was Earhart Sister School, she participated with me providing, helping out at Woodstock, and then she provided music for free to the Woodstock students. When I saw her name as part of this, it made me take a second look. I, I know, and I, and I called her, and I, and I would agree that anything that we see her name on, we really have to consider the quality. I'm sure they're offering a quality program to students. And again, I would say that it's very important to support this because it provides academic choice to all students, not just those who have parents that can afford to send their kids to private school. And I think that's very, very important. When people bring up the monetary argument, it's clearly stated that that cannot be considered. And why? Because that money comes from ADA, which is from our taxes, and it goes with the child. It goes with that child. The AUSD needs to be able to be a competitive school that people want to send their children to. It's not, it shouldn't be a school, a, a school district where families that cannot afford anything else have to send their children to. And I think that that's a big, I personally send my children to public school here. My kids have never gone to private school. And I think that AUSD is competitive, but I do know it does not meet the needs of every child. And just like the prior speaker said, our children get one chance at an education. If they're not getting the best education that their family thinks that they could get, I really think that we need to support that choice. And I think it's hard to say we stand for equity if we're not going to allow choice for all children regardless of their parents' income. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just changed what I'm gonna say, so one second here. One of the things that's been brought up by the last two speakers is this is a choice for parents who can't pay for private school. Paying for private school is a choice. And if you can't afford it, then you should spend your time working in the choice you have. I can't afford to live in a 10-bedroom mansion in Hillsborough, but I don't think the governor's gonna pull a little bit more money out of his budget, 'cause that's the choice I want to make. The reality is that public funds for public schools should go to the system that we have. And if we all work to make that system better, then maybe we would all be in a better situation. Once again, we have a school that wants parents to sign on the dotted line that they're gonna be there at every meeting and at everything. Hence, they're not going to have a reflection of what this district is. That's not how it works. If you're only gonna pull the best and the brightest, of course, it's gonna be wonderful. It's gonna be a private school, and I think you'll find, when you research most of these people, most of them have spent most of their educational experience in private school, which makes me wonder exactly how much money we're gonna have to spend watching and auditing and making sure that Johnny's not making his mission and not a nativity scene. And finally, I wanna say that I very much resent this comment of, "We're a learning community and, and stakeholders." I'm in a learning community. I'm in the AS, AUSD learning community, and I have three children in this district, so I am most definitely a stakeholder. And I urge you to vote no on this.
Thank you.
My name is Shamra Atkinson, and I want, I was not actually planning on coming up here, but I did have one thing that I wanted to say. I've worked in a private school for almost seven years, and I have watched families struggle in and out of the private schools, and because they haven't been able to afford to put their kids in that, in the private school, and their kids have not been successful in the public schools. And I have watched families struggle with that. And I, I am in support of this new charter school as a different choice for families, especially families in, where the public school that they're at currently is not, not working for their student. I know that there are students and families that need that currently, and I just wanna encourage the support of this charter school for that reason alone.
Thank you. Any other speakers? We can close the public hearing? Oh, one more?
I'm that guy. So I just wanted to address the issue, little problem I found, just looking over the title of this school, the Renaissance Leadership Academy for kindergartners. And the whole idea being that you can teach leadership, you can teach it, and even then to kindergartners. Well, people going to school, especially little kids, basically whatever they're doing, it's because their parents are telling them to do it. Not until, you know, maybe sixth grade, maybe even after that, that they actually wanna go to school to learn, and, you know, if at all. So here's the question, can you teach leadership? And I think the answer's no, because leadership is very special. It's very unique. It's when you, sorry, when you have a group of students and they're put in a difficult situation, and no one really knows what to do, and all of a sudden, someone stands up and organizes everybody, and they get the job done. And you can't teach that. You have to put people into those situations and see what happens. And the leaders aren't the ones that are taught to do what they do. They're the ones that find the courage to stand up. And, you know, I'm not really gonna say whether I support or, you know, this school or not, but I, I just find a problem with saying that you're gonna teach leadership to, of anything kindergartners. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are no other speakers. I'll close the public hearing. This is just an information item at this meeting, and we'll be taking action at the board meeting two weeks from today. Okay, we are moving on to-
Questions?
Four member questions?
Or comments?
Comments?
Yeah.
Mike? Oh, I'm sorry. Tracy?
I'd like to, I'd like to ask, I, I'd just like to note that we have a number of educators from Alameda Unified in the audience today, and I actually have a question for one of them, relevant to the, the discussion. If I could ask Dave Durking to come up for a moment, please? Thanks, Dave. There's been a discussion during this public hearing about the options for students, and I, I did bring this up one time before when we discussed charter schools, but, and, and in, in support of this, this application, which I might say was very well-prepared and very interesting, and, and the program looks, looks like it would be, meet, meet many of the objectives. But, but I'd like to ask you, I'm Dave Durking, the Student Services Director. Do we have any options in our district for students who aren't succeeding in public school? Because we've heard a lot about this is choice, and this is the option for students who aren't succeeding. And I just wanna know, for example, if we have a second grader who's not succeeding in a classroom or in a school, what would the options for that student be, given all the constraints?
There, there are several things, and, and this year would probably not be the prime example. For the first part, we've, we've traditionally in the past been able to offer open enrollment under a variety of schools for people who wanna make other choices. On a very regular basis, my office entertains requests for transfers to other schools. Those are often, I would say, for the most part, having to deal with family situations, student situations, performance situations. And in the end, I sense, I guess what my office does, and myself in particular, is I begin to broker possible changes from schools. I mean, we, we meet with both the principals, I talk with both the principals, I talk with the parents, we talk with the kids. If we can find other situations where we have space available and the option works for them, we make those changes, 'cause obviously, we get a child in the right place. It's their best opportunity. It happens on a fairly regular basis. In fact, I, I forget the exact number, but it's probably, you know, a good 20% of the elementary students in this district aren't in their home school, whether because they're directed or requested the transfer, or moved, or wanted, you know. So we do have quite a few opportunities. We can't always guarantee them. They're not always there. It varies from year to year. It varies space on space, but they do occur.
And that often is because of a student isn't succeeding, and the student, do you find that students improve their success? I mean, if they have an opportunity to, to move to a different situation, depending on the student-
I think in many times, when, when everyone does their homework, and we know we're putting the child in, in a good situation, most times, I think it works out. There are a few times where people perceive the grass is greener, and it really isn't. And then they come back and say, "Well, that didn't work, and we'd like to..." But it's always in the case about finding the situation that's gonna give the child the greatest opportunity to succeed.
Thanks, Dave, and thanks for being here for me to, to shout you out.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I really don't have any real questions, so you're fine. The only, the observation I'll make, and this is the thing that's kind of more of my, I guess, my business sense, is I'm really trying to get my head around this in that, you know, we actually, when we went through budget cuts in prior years, we've established a minimum level of- a minimum level of student populations for a school site, and that number's somewhere in the, around two-hundred-and-fifty, I believe. And yet, you know, a school like yourself is able to, in essence, create a, based on the numbers, a fiscally sound operating environment with two-hundred-and-five as the projected total enrollment. And that's just, you know, I'm still having trouble getting my mind around how, how that would be. And the other thing, I guess I would sort of question is, is if, maybe you can answer this, but maybe you don't need to either, is I don't know what the current going rate is for private education, but I assume it's above ten thousand dollars a year. And yet, you're willing to, in essence, limit the amount of revenue the child gets by agreeing to some state-mandated formula that, as you've seen in our prior presentation, is actually subject to fluctuations that are just totally outside of your control, that I would think that from a purely business point of view, you'd wanna set up a model that would be somewhere in between if you're gonna really compete with us, or with, with education, in that, you know, if you're only gonna get seven thousand from the state, and the private education is around twelve or thirteen thousand a kid, why don't you go for a private education in the middle at nine, and you get somewhere in between, and, you know, it just, it just doesn't make sense. I'm just, it's just a financial thing, it just makes sense. And that's, why are, why aren't you just going public, being a private, a private school, and charge, you know, something competitively less, I guess, is my question, if you wanna answer that, so to you.
On the closing slide, I think that kind of captured it all. When I was sending, when Julie and I were floating this idea initially, and we were sending out fly, you know, feelers to friends, one of the things that I kept saying over and over again, education and your ability to provide the right educational, the appropriate educational facilities and environment for your child should not be driven by zip code, shouldn't be driven by school footprint, shouldn't be driven by finances. We are educators, we're dedicated educators. And is there more revenue in a, in a non-public situation? Most definitely. Would our group dynamic changed if we were two Ks, you know, all the way up? Because there's certain overhead that's built in that would be mitigated if we had four-hundred-and-ten students as opposed to two-hundred-and-five students. But the bottom line is, our goal and our mission is set at keeping our community small, and then working within those constraints, and seeing how can we use our skills in terms of development, and fundraising, and other avenues available to us to bridge that gap so that there is more revenue available for our students. But, you know, our, we're all committed to a public charter.
David?
Mandy, do you have a copy of the petition with you? 'Cause I actually have several questions, some probably a little less important than others, but I'd like to just walk through. On page one, description of educational program, targeted school population. Third paragraph, "Our students' needs may include financial, academic, learning, and/or social challenges." And then it goes on to say, "A percentage of our students will be from low-income families and qualify for Title I. Our students represent the cultural makeup of Alameda. A percentage of our students will have learning needs ranging from," and so on. And I'm curious what this paragraph means. It's-
We're looking-
Very vague.
It's very-
Vague.
Okay.
And, and how would you get?
How can we make guarantees?
"A percentage of your students will be from low-income families and qualify for Title I."
Okay. When you're doing something like this, there, there are some assumptions that have to go into things. What we did was, inasmuch as we are committed to be located in the West End, we took Chipman, Washington, Ruby Beards, and Payton. And we went ahead and we took the API, and we did the breakout of disadvantaged English learner, disabled, free, and reduced lunch. Total students, two through eight, and total students, K through eight. And we worked out a percentage, so that there was a percentage that kind of fell within certain, certain categories that, that we were attempting to address.
Just, if I can interrupt you there, you took four schools and looked at their, their data?
Right.
Are you only gonna accept applications from those four schools?
No, we're not.
I didn't think so.
Right. And it's not reflective of the entire island. I, I will grant you that. It was a starting point. And that's why when we designed the budget, I think if we got to those that would qualify, the numbers, the numbers as reflected were not, were not significant for those who would qualify for special programs in the first year.
So that percentage of your students that will be from low-income families may be one or two percent, it may be, I mean, zero?
I highly doubt that it would be zero.
I'm just, I-
No, no, no. It will, you know-
The way it's stated.
Right. You know, unless you know what your population is gonna be before the fact, it's really difficult. We're just saying that it, you know-
But you're not targeting a specific population in terms of your outreach?
In terms of our outreach, a specific population.
Terms of, for enrollment?
Well, inasmuch as we will be located on the West End of Alameda, we are planning to have, you know, flyers, information packets, whatever, done in multiple languages, that will be, we will leave them at preschools, we will leave them at places of gathering, so that people have information available to them. We have even talked about canvassing neighborhoods and making the information available to parents, so that we go and, and put the information out there and have information meetings with them.
David? May I ask a question related to this while you're on this, rather than-
Sure, absolutely.
Am I?
I yield to-
Okay. So could you explain how you will go about then selecting students? What, what is the process to try to achieve whatever you wanna achieve?
What do you mean, what is the pro, I mean-
How will you select students? Are you going to, you're gonna, I heard you're gonna try to get people, you said you canvass flyers, some, but, but let's say you get four hundred app, you know, people who wanna come, how will you select the students who, who attend your school?
That would be a nice problem to have in certain circumstances, but inasmuch as we, our total capacity would, you know, would be exceeded so many times over on that, you know, we don't foresee that, we foresee that the model that we are offering is going, is, from the dialogue that we've had with, with interested parents, it is going to have, resonate with certain parents, but I, we don't see that we're gonna be so impacted or oversubscribed that that's gonna become an issue. But we will do heavy recruit, we will do heavy recruiting, as I say, you know, whether it is canvassing neighborhoods, doing the, doing the preschools, finding out where people gather. More as an information for us. We need to know where the people are, you know, in the West End of Alameda. Having been a principal in the West End of Alameda, I have a certain, I have a certain sense of, and basis of knowledge, but I, I need to be in communication with the leaders of the, I wanna call it the Chamber of Commerce, and I know I'm using the wrong term, but we've got the Park Street Chamber, and we've got the Webster-
West Alameda Business Association.
And gain some insight from people who are actually in the know. And that's all part of the process as we go forward, in terms of, you know, how do we reach people? Having said we're gonna be located in the West End of Alameda, having said that we wanna be a walking school, particularly for those in the early primary grades, where, you know, walking may be the only option, by its very nature, charter schools are open to the entire city of Alameda, in fact, they're open to the entire state, so-
Well, that's my question, because we already have two charter schools-
Right.
And they're both in the West End. And I think in, in both cases, there is not a majority of their students who come from the West End, or even, you know, the percentage is, is rather low. So, just because you're gonna be in the West End doesn't mean that you'll have West End students necessarily. And so my question, I go back, is how will you select your students? And, and let's say you get a, you, you're estimating a hundred and five students to begin with, that's, and that's four classes, and so, well, is it, yeah, no, it's, no, it's K through three, she said.
Plus six.
And six.
Oh, and six, okay, so five. So, what, how will you go about if you get a hundred and fifty applications? What's your process of selection?
Correct. We don't have many options. I mean, the options, the options are clearly defined in terms of oversubscription requires a lottery.
So, well, so i, if, if it's, if it's random, then, first of all, you can't guarantee that there'll, there'll be a high percentage in the West End or whatever, but, but if people are from all over the island, or as you say, even beyond that, I mean, if you take, I know if, usually, our schools start out, if, if you get filled up with Alameda students, and then you don't necessarily open it to beyond Alameda.
Right.
But, so let's just stay with that. So if you, if you have, and you do a lottery, then you may have students from, from-
You know, our hope would be that within those in the pool, that it would be a representative group. And, you know, a lottery is just that. I mean, it is a public lottery, and we're, we're drawing student names out, and you're, you're very right. I mean, it could be skewed one way or another, which will put an additional burden on the, on the Board of Directors in terms of, okay, how do we, how do we mitigate this skew in the future? We're gonna do everything in our power so that we do represent a balanced population.
What does that mean?
That our, our population is representative of the island, more specifically of the West End. I mean, that's where we're gonna be doing aggressive recruitment. But I've had parents who are living, you know, not on the West End say, "Does that mean that you, that we're not gonna be allowed to apply?" Well, most certainly not. They're gonna be allowed to, allowed to apply to the school, so-
I'm, sorry, I'm-
You know, that's right.
We're tag teaming you. I'm sorry. So I'm hearing you say that you want the school to be representative of the population on the West End. Is that, is that correct? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but is that what I heard you say, that you want-
When we designed this plan, that's, that was the intent, yes.
Representative of the island of Alameda, but representative of the West End of the island of Alameda?
And there is a difference.
And, and I, I want to be-
Right. No, 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 I know. You don't wanna put, you don't wanna put words in, words in my mouth. You know, when, when we were looking at this, yeah, she's throwing her hands up, which means it's all yours, Mandy. No, when we were looking at this, we felt, number one, because of the nature of the, of the school, the fact that it was an elementary school, that most parents are looking for a walking school. So, to answer your question, at least in the early primary grades, would it have greater, you know, what am I trying to say? Appeal as a neighborhood school, as a school that is easily accessible, especially for the students in the early primary grades, most definitely. And, you know, and when we, when we were looking at page one, and we were designing page one, it is reflective of, of what we perceive to be schools from Eighth West.
When you have signatures of parents who, who want to attend this school, I mean, that's part of the charter application, right?
The charter application, you can go one of two routes. You can neither go showing fifty percent plus of meaningful, meaningfully interested, credentialed teachers, or you can have fifty percent plus of the meaningfully interested potential parents. And we went with the, on the teacher side.
The teacher, okay, so you don't have the parent side.
Right.
I wanted to interrupt for a minute. There, we did contact you, asking that you address two pieces that I haven't heard you address.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be asked the question. I thought it was gonna be asked the question. I brought the, the information right here. Good, thank you.
I have one or two more stickers here in my, so mine a little detail on page twenty-three of the petition.
Twenty-three?
Uh-huh.
Twenty-four, twenty-three, yes.
At the bottom of the third paragraph, right above item F, says, "Proposed materials and cost analysis to the school board." In other parts of this petition, you're talking about the charter school's Board of Directors. Here, you mention the school board.
Typo.
It's the Board of Directors?
Yeah, sorry.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to double-check.
Oh, you know. I should've started reading it backwards, and then I, that's the way they say you catch these things, I was too close to it. Yes, indeed, it is the Board of Directors.
Thank you. On page twenty-seven, with the, the special ed, "After the first year of operation, RLA retains, or wants to retain the right to pursue independent LEA status." I would just ask board, staff, rather, that we at least get that in the MOU that we would get noticed before March fifteenth. Page, let's forget that one, page thirty-six, Board of Directors.
Yes. Okay. Page thirty-six.
You know what I'm gonna ask?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know what you're gonna ask. The, the last sentence.
"The district representative will not be a district staff or board member." So who will the district representative be?
Can we just back up? And I, let me just, I will just offer you just a little background on this sentence. And, not in defense of the sentence, when I first read this, we worked in conjunction with Charter School Development. And when I first read this sentence, I said, "Who's left?" And they said, "Put it in." And I came back once again, and I said, "Who's left?" And they said, "Put it in." I put it in. So, when Ms. Wong called me and said, "Look at the last sentence on page thirty-six," I mean, this thing is like, you know, emblazoned across my forehead. I know that sentence. I called Eric Primack, the president of Charter School Development Center, and I said, "The last thing Renaissance Leadership Academy wants to do is create a contentious environment with the district. We want to work and collaborate with them." I said, "The last sentence on page thirty-six is problematic." Just as background. And then, before I say it, let me, let me say, with your permission, this can be rewritten in any way that, you know, that you ask it to be written. But I was told that certain districts want the sent, certain districts want the sentence in there specifically that way. And it goes back to their being held harmless and the perceived chain back up to the district. They've asked that it be written in that way. They've included it inclusively and recommended to all charter school applicants that they put it in there. And I said, "Could you be a little more selective in the future and understand-" And I said, could you be a little more selective in the future and understand that this doesn't resonate well in all districts? So that's the background. It was not meant to be, I asked the same question, what do I do with this sentence after I put it in? But I'm, we hired professionals to guide us. I went with their professional wisdom. And now I'm coming to you saying, you know, we want to work with the district. And our meeting with Superintendent Daley and with David Durking, I know, I know Mr. Durking has worked with, with boards. And we want this oversight. We want to have someone from the district with us at our board meetings. So having said that, how do I address this?
Okay, thank you. I hadn't talked to district staff, but it flagged to me.
Okay.
Let's just move along. Actually, I lost staff, page 40. The way that formula for special ed funding is written, I guess I just want to, I found it confusing enough that I want to double check with staff that, you know, if for some reason, say the state decides to not fully, or not fully, that's the wrong way to phrase that, isn't it? To cut back on our special ed funding, are you sharing in that pain? Are you paying more for those services? Or are we on the hook for that decline? And so I, as I say, I, my, my eyes just started crossing trying to figure out the answer to that. And so I just would want to make sure that, that, that isn't, that that's written the way we want it to be. Page 42. This is your, your facility.
Yes.
I notice that policy that RLA will be housed in facilities that have received state fire marshal approval and that have been evaluated by a qualified structural engineer who's determined that the facilities present no substantial seismic safety hazard. I didn't see that on your memo in terms of what Gallagher and Lindsay are looking for.
My error, my omission. It should have been included.
So that's, that, that's included on the, the things that they're looking for?
I will make sure of that fact.
I've got a question there also. Has any space been, have you looked at any spaces? Where are you in process with that? It's unclear from the memo.
We've driven around spaces. I'm sorry, I had my head down.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We've driven around spaces. I haven't gone into actual.
And actually, while I'm on that topic, you, you mentioned that year two, you'd be anticipating a Prop 39 request. Do you have any anticipated location in mind?
That's a real tough question. I know that, you know, I know that Woodstock and Longfellow were closed. I also know that Woodstock and Longfellow are being highly utilized at this point. Our, since we're eligible for Prop 39, I mean, we're going to need some time to pursue this to find out if indeed there is anything within the district that would accommodate the small, you know, footprint of this school without it being an entire, an entire facility. But we will be, we will be looking into that further. Since it was not an option for the 2008, 2009 school year, we really have not given it much thought at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Then in page 43. Second bullet point, the development of promotional and informational material. This is in terms of enrollment.
Right.
Just for everyone else. The development of promotional and informational material that appeals to all of the various racial and ethnic groups represented in the district.
It's a daunting charge, isn't it?
I, I wonder if you'd care to amplify that statement?
Well, for that, I'm going to need more information from, from various groups in terms of, I know some of the language, the languages that we're dealing with in Alameda schools, having been a supervisor here, but I'm going to have to find out what is the primary language in the home so that we can communicate.
Your next bullet point addresses language. This bullet point is addressing racial, promotional and informational material that appeals to the various racial and ethnic groups. The, the following bullet point identifies languages, material in different languages. This is just material appealing to various racial and ethnic groups. And I'm curious if you'd like to amplify that.
We're just looking for balance. We're looking not to, not to appeal to, you know.
I'm curious what that material would, would look like.
We're looking to put forth fairly standard, I mean, fairly standard informational materials, but make sure that we hit a broad group of individuals and families, you know, potential, potential parents of students of Renaissance Leadership Academy. And I know that, you know, that rightfully so, the word appeals is right there in the midst of that second bullet on page 43. Maybe we could have phrased it differently. But the idea that we were trying to convey is that, you know, that the information material that was prepared would have broad appeal and we would make it, we would own that we would, you know, make sure that the information is available to groups irrespective of ethnicity or any, you know, any, anything else, that we're going to do our level best to promote the school to all sectors, whether it is translating in foreign language, languages other than our own, whether it is, you know.
And again, this is separate than the language.
Right, right.
Okay, we'll move on. Page 53, Oversight Reporting Revocation and Renewal. In this paragraph, you're asking for three days' notice before inspection or observation. I'd like to ask staff if that's practice with our other two charters?
No, but we usually do work through when we're visiting, so we don't give advance notification, but we work through our visits to the school. Meaning call up or show up, we drop in as well.
Okay. Now here's, once again, please, I'm the one who's standing here, I'm the lead petitioner. Once again, this is, you know, verbiage that was part of Charter School Development's recommendation on how we structure that particular part of it. And not having been part of this in the past, I mean, this one, this one I did not, you know, this one slipped by me. Page 36 didn't slip by me, this one, this one did slip.
Well, and whereas Einstein had to explain to his grandmother, you have to explain to school board.
No. I mean, need others to explain it, unless I can clearly articulate it. I, you know, that's the way I'm feeling right now. I'm not clearly articulating it to you.
Did we, page 54, last paragraph before labor relations reads, if the charter schools submit satisfactory annual reports for four consecutive years, during year five, the charter is automatically renewed. And I'd asked staff if we did that for our other two charters?
No.
I, and again, I'm, I'm sure that your consultant told you to put that in.
I'm standing here.
I, okay. But I would certainly have a problem with that one. So here's where I come to, my big problem though, is money. Let's go to page 11 of 24 of the budget. I think is as good a page as any. And what this shows is that acting on the assumptions in this budget, that you would end up year one with an ending balance of $54,869.
Right.
Okay. So we've just heard tonight, the governor's proposed, proposal that you may lose 105 times $197, which is $20,685. Say it's less than that, but, I mean, if we go with that, that would leave you with an ending balance at the end of year one of $34,000.
Unless I make judicious cuts. I need, I need a reserve of $50,000 or 5%, whichever is greater. So that's a given. So we're going to leave the threshold at $50,000 for year one. And having said that, where do we go? Some of the things that we've been exploring, inasmuch as right now, we're working with Mario Mariani and with Don Lindsay, nothing is firm for me to make an assumption on, an assumption is, you know, is, is not the safest move to be made. But Mario Mariani and Don Lindsay both know what we have to spend monthly on a facility as well as annually. I mean, it, it was there for their information because I couldn't go down any paths without telling them. And by the way, this is what our, we have to spend monthly on the facility for thinking of a 12-month window. If we're cut back, and the way I approached this was 10% of the state funding, so I was looking at a $74,000 cut as opposed to a $20,000 cut. So if we draw back on part of the square footage of the facility itself, because one of the rooms in the, in the facility that we're asking for is a multipurpose room that would, we could have indoor lunch, we could have assemblies, we could have meetings, we can have indoor PE in the wintertime. It would serve a myriad of uses. If I've got to go classrooms, multipurpose room, and something's got to give, that may be the room of choice, which would reduce the footprint, which would reduce the monthly lease obligation on the property, which, and we're looking at it as being three tenths of the overall square footage, the way I've explained it to Mario Mariani and Don Lindsay. So having said that, you're looking at roughly $20,000 there, provided that we're in a facility that is $90,000 plus a year. There would be an attendant reduction in electricity because of the smaller square footage, as would, there would be an attendant reduction in gas for the same reason. Water, we've left the same because that's driven by human consumption and use, so that one wasn't taken into consideration. Because of the, because of the facility maintenance is driven by 1.52% of your budget, that would be reduced. So that would be, that number would come out. We looked at travel advertising as possible, pulling away $1,000 from each of, each of those two. We have factored in $5,000 for a coach. If we get to tightening belts and it's, do we put it in the school day or do I get to pay a coach? Unfortunately, I'm not going to get to pay a coach. And it's that simple. And there, there would go that $5,000. And then we might have to look at, you know, if things got really desperate and we really were looking in the $74,000 range, we'd have to look at the classroom assistants. So, but for each one, if you will indulge me just a moment, I've been trying to look at how do we not compromise the quality of education that we give to the students? If we were forced to reduce the assistants, we could supplement with volunteers and my colleagues from Cal State East Bay have already started engaging in conversations on, will you take student teachers at Renaissance? And so would there be an opportunity for, for this to be a training ground for student, for future teachers? You know, we definitely entertain that idea. So there's possibilities of getting around paid assistants who are only, we only had them for three and a half hours a day, but that would help us reduce the budget. So we have begun to seriously look at it. Two of the things that are not factored in there because, and we look at them as potential offsets, but they are soft money. And the first one being the Public Charter School Grant Program, which we plan to apply for. Right now, we have the revolving loan in here with a cap of $250,000. And we do plan to apply for the Public Charter School Grant Program. So the planning and implementation, which is a two-year grant, $200,000 each year, which would greatly mitigate and change the, you know, would change the landscape dramatically for us. We'd still have need of the loan for part of the, part of the year inasmuch as the grant is written in such a way that it may not be used for facilities. So in order for us to go ahead and get into a facility, we're going to need other, other monies available to us, and that's where the, the loan money would come in. And then there's an opportunity for fundraising, but once again, you know.
I'm glad we're not going down the road of starting out a petition and basing it on fundraising.
No, 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 no.
Good. Yeah, it's obviously a very ugly financial time to be launching this, this enterprise. And that frankly, of, of all the, the issues in this, is the one that worries me the most and one that I would want staff to, to look at the closest because this is a, it's an ugly time for all of us financially. And we are ultimate, if, as a chartering authority, ultimately responsible for the financial health of those charters that we grant. So I would say that is the, the item that concerns me the most.
And I, you know, I, is that the last question?
I ran out of stickies. It's the last one for me.
Sorry, I have some stickies. I kept the pages so that, other questions?
Janet, do you have?
Just one other question. You mentioned, and I remember reading your, your, the commitment to excellence statement that you will ask students and parents and staff to sign.
Yes.
What if you have a parent or a student that refuses to sign it? Are they not, they're not allowed in the school then?
As part of, I'm trying to find the page. As part of students coming in, into the school, prior to admission, they attend an orientation where this is all out on the table and what the expectations are, as well as the Code of Conduct, the Student Handbook, and all of those things that might affect them so that no, so that everybody has as, as much information as possible to make an informed decision in terms of, you know, do I choose to support this?
Are there not some religious groups that won't sign pledges like this?
Can you, can you legally deny someone who refuses to sign? It's appendix G, page 110.
No, no, I know where that is, but it's the other part. Admission requirements. All prospective students on page 43 and their parents or guardians shall attend an orientation meeting detailing the school's instructional and operational philosophy and will be informed Where, you know, in talking to others who have, not on the island, but others who are Where, you know, in talking to others who have, not on the island, but others who are, who are running charter schools, this orientation meeting and a commitment to excellence is not new to Renaissance Leadership Academy. It is, it is an ongoing thing that you will see many times in, in other charter schools. And that doesn't, it didn't seem to be one of those things to raise a red flag that it's a potential problem. It is just a commitment of us, one to another, to work as a community for the best interest of all of our students.
But could you answer Janet's question? If, if a parent didn't want to sign that commitment to excellence, does that deny the student place at the school? There's a local sports team that has a commitment to excellence. I would point out.
I would say at that point, we would have a discussion with the parent as to why they're choosing Renaissance Leadership Academy if they don't want to buy into the program. Because that's what really the commitment to excellence is, really a commitment to the community. So, if you're not going to buy into the community, then what do you want to be here for? But if it's a religious or some other kind of, of reason for them not to sign, I think we would have to take that on an individual basis. I don't think we would deny student admissions flat out that way. It would, that would lead to a discussion and they would be taken on individual, an individual basis.
I have a related question with regard to the commitment to excellence. And, and it kind of goes towards the, the diversity that you're seeking and that you've expressed. One of the requirements of the parental commitment is to active participation in school-wide functions. And if you could just elaborate on that because I suspect that some of the parents of some of the students, the diverse students that you might be recruiting, might not be able to or willing to or feel comfortable participating in school-wide events because of English language limitations or work, full-time work limitations or other limitations. So, having parents sign that might, requiring that signature might reduce the attractiveness of the program to certain families.
It's, it's not a function that, you know, for each meeting, we're going to have somebody out there taking role and doing a head count and knowing exactly, you know, we've had five meetings this year and you haven't shown up for any of them. It's, it's more buying into the culture rather than if that makes sense to you. We, we are a community and more of this is being part of the culture that says we support one another. And I understand that, you know, if English is not your first language, this may be, you may feel, well, maybe I won't go type thing, but as a community, we're trying to teach the children how we support one another in our diversity. So, to try to create that environment that says, it doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter. Come and be part of this experience with us. That's what we're planning on doing. We're not planning to take, you know, micromanage parents. We want them to participate because it's in the best interest of their child to the limits that they can participate, you know.
I mean, and so, to that end, I mean, active participation, it, it's just, it's just an issue of, of your terminology. I mean, support for school-wide functions or participation in, but it, it suggests to me that you're expecting when parents sign this commitment, calling it a commitment and saying that, that part of that commitment is active participation would, may, just in my opinion, may result in some parents looking at the overall school and, and that might be a condition, active participation, committing to active participation in school-wide functions may be something that parents who might otherwise want to participate in this program wouldn't be able to commit to. I'm leaving that though. My, my other question regarding the, the commitments is, can you elaborate on the uniforms that will be required, please?
Having been to Mervyn's, we're just looking, we feel that uniforms are an equalizer. And it sets you about the business of the day. I put my uniform on, I know what I'm about for that day. You know, simple white shirt, khaki, khaki pants. It changed back and forth between khaki and blue. It's khaki again. Khaki pants for the boys. Not an extraordinary expense, but enough so that when you look at the students, we are all Renaissance Leadership Academy students. I mean, you can, you can, you can tell us. And in the past, I've had the experience where I've had to deal with, as an advocate for my parents, because even the idea of buying a uniform became problematic for them cost-wise. And I don't have a problem trying to assume that role again so that, you know, if cost is burdensome, let's, let's relieve that burden. But it's, you know, how do you open up dialogue with, with merchants and say, you know, and whom do I have to go beyond that in order to make this happen?
Thank you.
Mike?
I said, the final quick question. What, it's not a requirement obviously, but what's the staff diversity? Of your, of your proposed staff, what's going to be the diversity of your staff?
Our staff diversity right now is we're all female and we're all Caucasian.
Okay, thank you. Okay, David?
So, I did have one question that I didn't.
No sticky.
No sticky. And the reason there was no sticky is because actually, I'd like you to amplify, and I was thinking about this when you were answering some of the other questions. May help in terms of underlying philosophy. The word Renaissance, if you could amplify again why the word Renaissance is in your name.
Well, if we go back to the beginning of where we got our, where we got our footing. You really want me to go from movable, movable type and printed books for the first time and all of that? In my own experience, I'm, I'm only going to draw from my experience. There are certain things, there are certain events, there are certain words that have a lot of energy associated with them. Renaissance happened to be one of those words. And the fact that it was the beginning, I mean, we're coming out of the Middle Ages, we're going into the Renaissance. It was a period of discovery. It wasn't, it wasn't necessary that, you know, Galileo knew what he was looking up there for. He had a strong sense of what he was looking up there for. But the fact that people were stepping be, stepping beyond and using exploration, whether it is the discoverers, whether it is Michelangelo and those prisoners coming out of the, out of the marble because he saw them in the marble and was able to draw them out. I mean, it was people reaching beyond. And what we're hoping to do is create an environment that supports discovery within our students so that they reach beyond themselves. And collectively, as a group, we support one another's growth. Does that make sense?
It's a lot more passionate than I heard you on any of your other answers.
I don't have any, there's no prompts that I have to worry about clicking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Mandy, I bet you wish I had been able to move the agenda up a little faster. Go ahead.
Can I ask one question? There's one more thing. And I, it was, it had to do about governance structure, roles and responsibilities. Can I turn the microphone over to Denise Top, who is the attorney serving on our launch board? Because she's worked long and hard in collaboration with us so that we, we could present this to you this evening and go forward.
That'd be fine.
Good evening. I'm Denise Top, previously introduced as a launch board member. And I do understand that there is questions from the petition regarding governance structure. And what I'd like to do is offer a draft of our bylaws and articles of incorporation with the understanding that the board has not adopted any of these. It's a working document. We're still in the midst of talking about them. But it's, it lends a lot of structure to the petition where it's lacking. Can I go ahead and approach and pass them out? And actually, I have one. This is a learning experience after all. So, voting members are defined on page three. And those are the parents, guardians, custodians, or primary caregivers of the students enrolled and attending the Renaissance Leadership, Leadership Academy and all employees of the school. Membership starts on page three. Membership voting is detailed on page five. The composition of the board is on page eight with a discussion of officers on page fourteen. And I'll address that. The officers, we've allotted for the core positions being president, treasurer, and secretary. However, we've also allowed for discretionary chairperson of the board as well as assistant secretaries and assistant treasurers. The goal being to uphold the highest fiscal responsibility to the board possible and, and also keep that checks and balances therein. And then, I'm also completely prepared to answer any, any questions that you might have. And I have a couple other key page numbers if you'd like them pointed out.
Any questions?
Staff had requested this information.
One thing that jumps out at me then on page eight and nine, composition of directors. So, we have at least one non-voting director from the granting school district. And it goes on to say, director shall serve a term of only one year, except for the professional learning community team. So, does this mean, reading this, that the district director has to change?
No, not the district director. That probably could be written clear.
I see an exception for the professional learning community team, but I don't see an exception for the district director.
That's an excellent call-out and that can certainly be clarified. But no, the intent would not be for that position to be rotating. And the intent is really just to keep all of the directors for a term of one year with the reelection at the general meeting to be held in April. And then, no director would serve more than three consecutive terms without taking a term off.
Of the non-district A U S D staff?
Exactly, exactly.
Because that's not the way this is written right now.
Right. It's a working document and that's an excellent call-out and I appreciate you pointing that out and that will be clarified. That's a very good call-out. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
That's my only question. I think I'll quit while I'm.
You're a quicker read than I am. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And just for the public's information, the next time we will be looking at this charter for a decision will be by February twentieth, two thousand and eight.
Twenty-second, twenty-second.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you, Ardella. Oh, go ahead.
One last thing that wasn't, wasn't mentioned, but it was a question and it's articulated in the budget. In the budget, we have allocated fifteen hundred dollars. A question was asked by Ms. Wong in terms of how do you train this board? We have allocated fifteen hundred dollars a year to train the board. And Charter School Development Center does put on, you know, a training so that the Board of Directors for Charter Schools are appropriately equipped to deal with the rigors of their positions on the board. So, that's it. That's it.
Thank you, Mandy. Okay. Since it's a little past nine, usually as a courtesy, we try to get our student board members home to finish their homework. And Stefan, you've been very patient, so if I can, I would like to move G seven up so that we can get our student board member home. Any objections? All right, Stefan, you're on.
Good evening, everyone. The SNL students are now studying very hard for their finals, which begin tomorrow. And they will last all week long. And at the end of the week will be the end of the semester. SNL will end the week of hard work with the opening of the fabulous play Angels in America, directed by English teacher Jean Cahane. Showtimes are January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth and February first and second. So, please come and see us. Also, Winter Guard season has started as the band's flag team will be taking their cheerleading theme to Wilcox and Benicia High Schools in the near future. SNL will also be hosting its own Winter Guard show that will be on March seventh. And speaking of the band, the marching band participated in the Oakland Christmas Parade on December first. We have received word that SNL's band won third place out of nine marching bands. And lastly, eighth grade information night is, this is on Wednesday, January thirtieth at seven P M. And there we will be advertising our great school and encouraging the young eighth graders to attend in the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine school year. So, that's all for SNL.
Thank you. Okay. We moved up C S C A reopeners in front of technology implementation.
Should have moved it to T four.
Good evening. This is the formal process of reopeners for the successor contract to the two oh five, two thousand and five, two thousand and eight contract between A U S D and C S C A, the Office Technical and Professional Unit. This is the public knowledge of the reopeners. And then, at the next board member, A U S D will present theirs.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? All right. Thank you. All right, next item. Jess, it's finally.
Actually, it's a worth, just sorry, before we move forward, for the public's sake, just amplifying, amplifying, C S C A now has two groups and which group this is?
Chapter twenty, chapter twenty-seven, which is C S A classified as opposed to C S C A blue, which is.
Which is formerly local one.
Formerly local one. This is our chapter twenty-seven.
Thank you. All right, now I'll shut up.
Jess, it is finally your time.
Hey. Do we need to turn on the music?
Well, you know, it's been a long road to get here. I want to thank the voting public. Now, this is the second of three technology updates for the year. We're basically six, seven months into a three-to-five-year program. There's really not a whole lot to say. So, we're going to spend just a couple minutes, going to show you a multimedia presentation and talk a little bit about twenty-first century skills and some of the things we are doing. You know, we're, we're pretty well pleased with the direction we've been going. Diana with the teachers, the bits, the staff development, training going on all the time. She'll speak to that after the presentation. But we're going to turn down the lights and make sure this is on. So, let's get started here. Did you know? Did you know? I'll let you finish that last slide.
The interface isn't working for me.
I'm sorry. I apologize for the sound. It is.
It worked.
Yeah, well, next time I do one of these, I'll do it on my own laptop and.
Provide a bit of memory and RAM and.
Yeah, well, you know, it's nice to be the head of technology. Education is changing. You are never, ever, ever going to go back to that 19th century educational model. Your student population will not let you. We have stood here, sat here, and listened to great lengths, the last several board meetings, about 21st century skills, about the teacher as facilitator, about technology enhancement. And that is the direction that the universe is going. And Diana and I are doing our utmost to push, pull, prod, and drag this district into the 21st century. So, you know, you guys can read this, no reason for me to sit here and pontificate. As much as I like to hear myself talk, I do want to just give you, most of the major universities have their own iPod sites. Stanford University has an iPod site for their students to download Apple stuff, courseware stuff. The number-one download on Apple's, no, on Stanford University's iPod site is quantum mechanics. They are learning quantum mechanics on an iPod. We're still trying to deal with green boards and white chalk. It ain't working. So, shift has happened. Alameda nineteen hundreds, Alameda two thousand eight. And we're pretty pleased with the direction it's going. Although that picture is terrible, both those pictures are terrible.
Well, so where are we? I mean, in terms of, you brought up the iPods and access, sorry, Mr. President, but, and that was a great presentation. Where are we right now in terms of the, our students' access to all their materials online, in terms of all of our students having computer access, in terms of all of our teachers being online and having access? And so where are we in terms of our technology?
Okay, well, we'll both answer that. I'll start off with the hardware side of it. Several, we're just about done with all of the four through eight core curriculum classes. We do have several schools that are completely done with the technology that's necessary for them to teach the core materials. The stuff that we're getting from Scott Forsman and Apprentice Hall, that's all on CDs or internet, is available to those teachers. We have deployed.
So you're talking about teacher access to educational, to curriculum?
Yes, and student access, as long as there's computers in the school. Since the last, well, since you approved the tech plan, we've installed just short of four hundred new computers and somewhere around fifty large-format LCD projectors in the classrooms for teachers to use. Now, we're not pushing, we're offering these as tools to teachers that will use them, and developing some inertia out there to request additional tools as we have them. And then Diana's been doing a lot of staff development and.
Okay, so since I spoke last time, my role has been evolving every day, but my basic day is I go in and I coach students and teachers in using technologies, and this is teachers that actually ask me to come. I've been working with teachers K through eight, implementing the new textbook adoption materials and getting their students online, getting the teachers to create class assignments online with the science, and then the social studies with the K five. So I'm still doing that. I have people and principals calling me, and I go and do that training. Then I offer a monthly series called the Innovative Educators Series with a variety of Web 2.0 tools that, these are teachers that want to start using these things in the classroom. It's becoming so popular that I now have to probably offer two a month, and that's after school, and I've been lucky enough to find outside sources of funding. From Discovery Education is one of the funding bodies that has helped pay for gifts and, you know, incentive gifts for teachers to come, because I'm not paying them a stipend, and I think teachers need to be compensated. So this has been very successful, and now it's getting so big that I'm hardly ever in the office, because people say, "Can you come? Can you coach my kids?" In fact, I'm invited to go on a field trip to do a film and a podcast with, between third graders and junior AP students at a local high school. We're going to San Francisco, and we had to sign all these papers. But these kinds of, I mean, it's exploding in a way. And this summer, I'm hoping to, I mean, not hoping, I'm going to do a summer institute with our teachers K eight, implementing the online textbook. And that's come from meeting with teachers in their department meetings. I've been invited to many of those, and they tell me what their needs are, where they want to go. So we're just in the infant stages right now, but listening to what teachers want and moving in that direction. It's incredible.
Right, we've been meeting with the school sites. Diane and I have been tag teaming a lot of them to talk with their teachers about what they're looking for in support from the district and from technology services. I'll let you finish that last slide.
I have to read it.
And we are working currently, I talked with Debbie and the Ed Services team the other day, about a summer institute, doing training, not trying to overlap with teacher training or summer school, but we're looking at basic technology skills, basic Microsoft Office productivity, and then the text, the curriculum.
Correct.
So from one year ago, it has been exponential. I mean, when I stood here a year ago and gave you the FICMAT report and told you the direction that we were going to head, I had no idea we would be as successful as we are. If you asked me to rate it on a scale of one to 10, I could honestly say that it's a 10. It exceeded all of the expectations that I had a year ago.
What about with regard to our systems? Are we, are we updating on a regular basis? Are we doing okay in terms of our system needs?
Yes, we are. Again, we've installed over 300 new computers, and we've been rolling them downward such that, you know, whoever has the most need for horsepower and technology, that's what they get within certain limitations. We've been installing a lot of stuff with the bond, or with voucher money, or technology money in classrooms, the stuff that happened out at ASTI, a couple new labs at Island and Payden. So we've been installing the equipment that they can use for both the students and the teachers. We've been upgrading the memory in computers as we get to them. I order about 50 new memory sticks every other week to keep upgrading the memory. So, yeah, we are doing it. I mean, we've got, we've got digital cameras out there, we've got the overhead camera projectors. So whatever is necessary in the classroom to teach the curriculum.
Can I just, can I add to that? The difference, yes, that's how we do things, but the difference, I think, from a year ago to today, and actually the difference between September to today, is teachers now have the capabilities to do what they need to do with their workstations. They're no longer locked down as they were before. Before, teachers were, "Can you look, can you add a printer for me? Can you install a simplest software? Can you update this?" We don't have to do that anymore. Teachers can actually function. And so now, I may, so now my main body is not to go and load, you know, load simple software, it's actually to do coaching. So that's a huge change.
Thank you. We've been in the process of upgrading our network and our network infrastructure. I have met with two vendors, and I'm meeting with AP and T tomorrow to discuss network upgrades. So we're marching in that direction.
To what extent, I heard Danny talking about outside money, to what extent are we going after grants, partnering with AEF, for example, to clone you?
What's happening tomorrow afternoon? What's happening tomorrow afternoon?
Donor's Choice is meeting upstairs in our tech room.
Because, I mean, absolutely, I can see this just exploding, and we need to clone this.
Yeah, no, and I think right now, I've sent out a memo to, or an email to all the teachers in the district, advertising the Donor Choose program, which I've met many teachers in this district that get funded for every one of the projects they post. I did a webinar the other day with Donor Choose and saw the ease at which you can use this. And the person that gave me the webinar, his girlfriend, who's a teacher here in Oakland, has been teaching for two years and has had 35 projects funded, fully funded. So the money is clearly out there. Now, we need to just teach the teachers how to get it. And that's a piece of, so tomorrow there will be a live training, and then after that, it's easy enough for me to do it in an extension to the Innovative Educators series, which I've been kind of, you know, posting that, getting people to understand that, yeah, we don't have the resources, but there are ways for you to get it.
Mike?
Were you done?
Were you done, Dave?
For now.
For now? Okay, because who knows? My questions may spark more questions, right? So let's get out of the forest and the trees here. You know, we're talking about things that need to be talked about, which are obviously where it affects, impacts ultimately in the classroom level. But stepping back and looking at the FICMAT report, and now a year later, you know, we were in a situation where things needed to be done, and the technology department, in essence, needed to change the perception out there that you could stand and deliver. And it appears that that's the direction that you've been able to move into, and I think that it's, based on the results you're getting, that's what's being demonstrated. However, I guess success potentially is going to breed contention or allocation of resources, as well as just own overall direction and stuff. So from a governance structure or from an oversight structure, what structures do we have in place, or do we need to put in place to ensure that as we, as the metaphor goes, change this plane while it's moving or flying or whatever, that we have someone who's overseeing it? And I guess I'll just, you know, I'll jump right in, because I actually attended their, what was it called now, the Technology Steering Committee?
Yes.
Or Jess's meeting of, you know, of the minds. And I'm just trying to understand what processes we have in place for, like you said, it sounds like you've got the, what you're doing is you're dealing with the immediate, oh, I've got curriculum adoptions that are having this impact. But how do we manage the transitions to these other leaps of, you know, whatever they are in terms of pure, you know, bigger directions of the district, so that we create the plans, and then we actually agree upon the priorities, because there's, I think resources are somewhat scarce. You've got the business units, or the business users, which I guess is the educational sources, who you report to. You've got maybe the teachers as another user group, and then you've got that other group that just pays the bills and stuff, that probably has need for technology. So I'm wondering how we're, what process do we have in place, or do we need to have in place to sort of balance all of those off, or is it just go, all fall to the superintendent?
Member McMahon, I don't know that I can significantly answer your question to the level. Are we doing okay in terms of our system needs?
Yes, we are. Again, we've installed over 300 new computers and we've been rolling them downward such that, you know, whoever has the most need for horsepower and technology, that's what they get within certain limitations. We've been installing a lot of stuff with the bond or with voucher money or technology money in classrooms, the stuff that happened out at ASTI, a couple of new labs at Island and Payden. So we've been installing the equipment that they can use for both the students and the teachers. We've been upgrading the memory in computers as we get to them. I order about 50 new memory sticks every other week to keep upgrading the memory. So yeah, we are doing it. I mean, we've got digital cameras out there, we've got the overhead camera projectors. So whatever is necessary in the classroom to teach the curriculum.
Can I just, can I add to that? The difference, yes, that's how we do things, but the difference, I think, from a year ago to today, and actually the difference between September to today, is teachers now have the capabilities to do what they need to do with their workstations. They're no longer locked down as they were before. Before, teachers were, can you look, can you add a printer for me? Can you install a simplest software? Can you update this? We don't have to do that anymore. Teachers can actually function. And so now I'm, so now my main body is not to go and load, you know, load simple software, it's actually to do coaching. So that's a huge change.
Thank you. We've been in the process of upgrading our network and our network infrastructure. I have met with two vendors and I'm meeting with AP and T tomorrow to discuss network upgrades. So we're marching in that direction.
To what extent, I heard Diane talking about outside money, to what extent are we going after grants, partnering with AEF, for example, to clone you?
Yeah.
What's happening tomorrow afternoon? What's happening tomorrow afternoon? Donor's Choice is meeting upstairs in our tech room.
Because, I mean, absolutely, I can see this just exploding and we need to clone this.
Yeah, no, and I think right now, I've sent out a memo to, or an email to all the teachers in the district advertising the Donor Choose program, which I've met many teachers in this district that get funded for every one of the projects they post. I did a webinar the other day with Donor Choose and saw the ease at which you can use this. And the person that gave me the webinar, his girlfriend, who's a teacher here in Oakland, has been teaching for two years and has had 35 projects funded, fully funded. So the money is clearly out there. Now, we need to just teach the teachers how to get it. And that's a piece of, so tomorrow there will be a live training, and then after that, it's easy enough for me to do it in an extension to the Innovative Educator Series, which I've been kind of, you know, posting that, getting people to understand that, yeah, we don't have the resources, but there are ways for you to get it.
Mike?
Were you done?
Were you done?
For now.
For now? Okay. Yeah, because who knows? My questions may spark more questions, right? So let's get out of the forest and the trees here. You know, we're talking about things that need to be talked about, which are obviously where it affects, impacts ultimately in the classroom level. But stepping back and looking at the FICMAT report and now a year later, you know, we were in a situation where things needed to be done and the technology department, in essence, needed to change the perception out there that you could stand and deliver. And it appears that that's the direction that you've been able to move into, and I think that it's, based on the results you're getting, that's what's being demonstrated. However, I guess success potentially is going to breed contention or allocation of resources as well as just own overall direction and stuff. So from a governance structure or from an oversight structure, what structures do we have in place or do we need to put in place to ensure that as we, as the metaphor goes, change this plane while it's moving or flying or whatever, that we have someone who's overseeing it? And I guess I'll just, you know, I'll jump right in because I actually attended their, what was it called now? The Technology Steering Committee?
Yes.
Or Jess's meeting of, you know, of the minds. And I'm just trying to understand what processes we have in place for, like you said, it sounds like you've got the, what you're doing is you're dealing with the immediate, oh, I've got curriculum adoptions that are having this impact. But how do we manage the transitions to these other leaps of, you know, whatever they are in terms of pure, you know, bigger directions of the district so that we create the plans and then we actually agree upon the priorities because there's, I think resources are somewhat scarce. You've got the business units or the business users, which I guess is the educational sources, who you report to. You've got maybe the teachers as another user group, and then you've got that other group that just pays the bills and stuff that probably has need for technology. So I'm wondering how we're, what process do we have in place or do we need to have in place to sort of balance all of those off or is it just go, all fall to the superintendent?
Member McMahon, I don't know that I can significantly answer your question to the level that you expect at this moment.
I'm just planting a seed.
I understand the seed. I understand the necessity. I will go back to the opening paragraph of my report to the board a year ago, which basically says that the degree of responsibility, authority, and commitment this district places, and I'm paraphrasing because even my memory is not that good.
Look it up.
Yeah, I know. But wherever you place your resources, it's not a question of specific dollars or specific people, it's where the district focus is. And I have some thoughts and ideas, which I'm not prepared to share in this particular forum, but I will share with staff on what I think should be doing, should be done. I do believe we need oversight. I do believe that what we just said over the last 20 minutes, that shift is happening and that this district needs to take a look at the technology services role within that shift. Again, going back to my original report a year ago, there is no function or department in this district that I do not impact, including board members and emails and, so I'm not a slice of the pie, I'm at the center of that pie.
David? So I'd like to commend both of you and the whole department. Excellent direction that this is going, but I'd also like to commend Adala because I think a large part of where this is going is the, if nothing more, it is more, but if nothing more than the perceptual shift of putting tech services underneath ed services as opposed to business services. And so huge change in where this department's going and thanks to you and your leadership, Jess, but I also want to commend Adala as well.
She made a good choice.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, too. Okay, moving on to the next item. It will be Special Education Implementation Plan Update. Rosalind, thank you for being so patient.
Remind me which one. I'm coming back this evening to update you, as I said, a year ago. Year ago, I came and talked to you about the FICMAT recommendations, and you asked me if I could come back and update you, and I will. I think Lou started hers report with, this is bad and it's going to get worse. I wanted to name mine the good, the bad, and the ugly, but you will see that between the FICMAT report, the self-review, and other events, that special education continues to be a challenge in United States and in Alameda. Okay, special ed update. Last year, I talked about the special ed history, that prior to 1975, there was no required special education. Some districts had special education, some districts didn't. About 100,000 students at the time of the passing of the federal special ed law were not in school. I talked about my cousin that I grew up with, rural California, never allowed in a California public school. The federal law was created out of multiple lawsuits. Parents went to school districts, asked for education, were denied it, put their children in private schools, went back and asked for reimbursement, went to court, and the courts said, yes, you can have the reimbursement. School district said, we can't afford it. Court said, that's not the issue, you will give it. The litigation continues. The Office of Administrative Hearings, their last report for the first quarter of '07, '08, so that was July, August, and September, they closed 723 cases and 36% of those were in autism. What does this law require? Requires FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education, to all qualified disabled students without regard to cost, without regard to the availability of services in all areas of need. And if you can't come to an agreement between the school district and the family, because the family has to sign their permission for the services, then courts decide. And so one of the things that a director of special education and special ed coordinators, I want to thank my two coordinators for being here this evening and my husband, is many times they don't look, they don't look at the cost, they don't look at the availability of services. So when Sacramento Unified went to court and said, we can't afford mainstreaming and putting an aide with every disabled child, they fought that battle to the Supreme Court and lost. So what are the costs? This is '06, '07. Total special ed revenue, we get money from the feds, we get money from the state, 700, 7,565. Special ed revenue, base limit revenue that the students coming to school provide us, another million six. Total revenue, 9,235. However, because we have a system that requires us to provide services without regard to cost and without regard to availability of services, our expenditures exceed our revenue. It has always been that way. This is not new. The federal government, when they passed the law, promised 40% of the cost for years, I think about 15 years, they provided 7%. I think they're up to about 16%. The general fund contribution in Alameda Unified is 4,700, almost 4,800, this was last year. The percent of the general fund, the percent of the expenditures provided by the general fund is about 34%. In our SLPA, in our SLPA, Special Education Local Plan Area, is Alameda, Albany, Berkeley, Emeryville, and Piedmont, we're the lowest, but we're going up. Bad news, '07, '08, anticipated general fund contribution increases, about 800,000. Why? That's what I keep asking myself. Lack of availability of personnel is the number one issue. Contracted speech therapists have doubled in this year, I'll talk more about that. We have to provide speech therapy. If we can't hire, we have to go to contractors, hugely expensive. The vast majority of our new teachers are interns. Sometimes they are just promising to take a special education course, even an education course, and they require targeted ongoing support because parents have the right to check teaching credentials and they can file a complaint if we do not provide fully credentialed teachers. So we are required to provide those interns with very specific targeted support. We had a psychologist resign right at the beginning of the school year. We were not able to hire a psychologist to replace her. We still have to do all of the assessments, so we have to go to the private sector. We are unable to hire paraprofessionals. We have 150-some positions, we have 15 current openings, many of them from the beginning of the year. In addition to that, we have not a rise in students, but a rise in the complexity of needs. Autism is the big area. Student with specific disabilities needs a teacher and a portion of a teacher and a portion of one para. A student with autism needs a portion of a teacher and multiple paras. Occupational therapy, speech therapy, behavioral intervention therapy, they have a lot of needs. So let's look at the speech costs increase. In 2000, 2007, 2006, 2007, we had four contracted district speech therapists and four IEP-based private speech therapists. We negotiated with families to provide private speech therapy. We couldn't serve them, we didn't have enough time in the system. And it costs us, just for that, 331,000, oh, there's an extra number there, $493. This year, we have nine contracted. What happened? We had two speech therapists retire, and we had two speech therapists that went to neighboring districts that pay more. In addition, we had a growth in our speech therapy number of IEPs, and so our contracted speech therapy is close to a million dollars. Our current budget is 374. The difference, we included some open position salaries that haven't been spent because we haven't hired, been able to hire a speech therapist. We posted all spring, we had two applicants, both declined us, and that was it. So we're short almost $600,000 budget shortfall in our speech therapy, and that is a big chunk of where we're going over this year. So what if we just say, we're not going to do it, we can't afford it, we're just, I'm sorry, next person that comes in that writes me a letter and says, I, as I got this week, I'm new to Alameda, and these are the services on my son's IEP, and CC's it to her attorney, I just say, no. Sorry, we can't afford it. Well, I've been sharing this with every faculty at the 612, I've gotten all schools, I'm doing WOOD last, next week. Doe versus Withers, this is a civil action. I want you to listen to the defendants. They were the teacher who refused to implement the IEP, the principal who didn't get involved because it was a special ed issue, the superintendent and the Board of Education. They were all sued, they all lost. But I think the wording is important for us to understand in listening or in thinking about special education. This came out of the decision. The defendants, that's the teacher, the principal, the superintendent, and the board, acting under the color of state law as public school teachers, principals, administration, Board of Education, deprived the plaintiff, Dee Dee, of his statutory protected civil right to a FAP. So it isn't about education, it's about civil rights. Also, we could say, no, I could say to that parent, I could write back, we're required to give a prior written notice when we decline a service and say, instead of, we're not going to do it for the following reasons, it's not educationally relevant, whatever, but we're not going to do it because we don't have the money, then we go to court, and then the court decides, and they will not only ask us, tell us to pay it, or as one, we were told recently, we'll be excoriated, which means to have your skin removed, but we will pay for the private services and the compensatory education because if you don't provide the service all the time that you don't provide it, you have to go back and pay for that. So what to do, what to do? First of all, we all need to get it. And when I say get it, it is that special education is litigious, and litigation drives what is a defensible program, it drives what we have to provide to parents. And every department, every person in Alameda, including people who write emails and using student names and speculate on disabilities, need to get that that's creating a liability. We need to continue to assess our infrastructure and system. Last year, we talked about the rise of autism, we added autism classes, we're doing well as far as our litigation in that area. This year, our case miss report showed a huge jump in other health impaired. Well, who are those folks? Well, it is, covers a lot of things, students that have cancer, students that have neurological disorders, but attention deficit hyperactivity disorder is one of the areas. And we're getting a lot of parents coming with information from their doctors, and we assess and find that the student may is eligible. So a 73% increase in that area. So we have to continue to look at our programs. We need to build legally defensible programs. That was what we were doing with autism. Autism legally defensible is 25 hours minimum a week per preschool three-year-old. We need to invest in quality assessments, that's where the IEP starts. IEP and placement is based on assessment, which drives goals, which drives placement. Many cases, when you read them, they're lost on the assessments because what a judge listens to is the battle of the experts. So it's your assessors versus some private assessors usually. We need to focus on recruitment and retention of qualified staff, and I want to focus on retention. Recruitment is difficult, but then to have them leave is even more difficult. We need to understand and prepare for trends, this includes the disabilities, but it also includes the retirement bubble. It includes technology, I have a few things to say about that later. Pay now or triple later. If I don't pay for the in-home provider that was just asked for in this letter CC to the attorney, then we wait, we go to court, the court says, okay, pay for that and all the compensatory stuff. And then joint efforts for equitable funding, there's ongoing efforts to get special ed funding where it needs to be, but I put that last because we all know that takes time. So I came here, the initial purpose was to talk about special ed and FICMAT, so I'll just review that briefly. It was requested, FICMAT was requested for special education in '05, '06 due to increasing litigation costs and parent complaints, increasing NPS, non-public school and non-public agency costs, and staffing problems and low morale. And we still own most of those. The FICMAT team made 113 recommendations, and last year, I talked about five major components to responding to those. One was to build a one unified educational system. Another was to develop better communication systems with staff and parents, implement specialized instruction, and the board made some decisions about funding some of that. Respond to specialized, special populations, autism would be one, another is a growing area, 43% gain in students with emotional disturbance, that's going to be another one. Address compliance, our requirements to dot all our Is and cross all our Ts on our IEPs. Those IEPs go to federal court, and I have been to federal court now a couple times, and those IEPs that are written in IEP meetings are sitting there. So what's the status of the FICMAT report? Well, one unified system. In the elementary programs, we have special ed teachers participating in structured interventions for all students and still maintaining their work with the students with special needs. SIM, Strategic Instruction Model work is being done at the secondary level with both special and general ed. Research validated, totally defendable program. As director, I have met once and I have scheduled meeting for the rest of the year with the executive cabinet to just talk about special ed. This is a new structure and I think it will do well in the change of directors. What's not done, we do not have a well-articulated RTI model. RTI is something new in the law, response to intervention, and there are many components. Many of them are instructional, the one big piece we don't have is the behavioral component. Communication system. There were no procedural manuals when FICMAT came, we have now one started, first three chapters. Whoa. What happened to my slideshow? I did not touch it. Try it again. Oh, okay, there, no, I went back. What did I do? I want the one I was on. Oh, communication system. Hmm?
Did before or after this one?
This was the one I'm on.
Oh, this is the one.
Mm-hmm. Good. There we go. Thank you very much. We have some program brochures, that was one of the recommendations, we met with families and talked about programs. We have put in medical billing for psyches, or psychologists in our DIS services, DIS is speech, occupational therapy. That's going to help us with our communication system. We've scheduled some special education information nights. One is coming up, the flyer hasn't gone out in March. We had a special education parent summit last year. We have not established a district advisory committee, as was recommended, and it's just not done. Specialized instruction for an educational benefit. Educational benefit is something that is required by the law. It actually initially came out in a legal case, of course. The Rowley decision, which said that Amy Rowley was deaf and her parents sued a school district and said that she was identified as gifted and she didn't perform at the gifted level, and the Supreme Court said that special education is to provide a floor of educational opportunity reasonably calculated to provide an educational benefit, and the state has a whole formula for determining that. So we've done a lot of staff development on educational benefit, we've done SIM staff development, which is a deeply research-based instructional model. We have We have some teacher on special assignment support to new teachers so that they can actually be providing educational benefit while they are also learning. The thing we haven't done is recruitment with results. To provide educational benefit, you need credentialed staff. Responses to special populations. We added, through your support of funding, two autism classes. They are full. We currently have approximately, I don't know, about twelve classes dedicated to students with autism. And autism is a hugely broad range of disability. And so we have classes that support a variety of that, along that continuum. We have non-public agency in-class support for autism programs and teachers. This is really needed when we had our hearing that I'll talk about in our litigation portion. Our intern teacher was on the stand. The first thing you do when you testify is tell your credentials. So you start with intern. But our NPA, who is a very solid and non-public agency, supports that teacher on a weekly basis. It costs us money, but we prevailed in our hearing. Staff development and social competence. This is the new word for students with behavior challenges, and we have a number of those students, particularly in the elementary, it seems, this year. And so we are doing staff development on how to help those students. What is not done, and what is growing and is going to be the future of litigation, is collaborative structures for the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old, the mild to moderate, student with mild to moderate disability that doesn't get a high school diploma. We own those students until they're twenty-two. Compliance systems. SAFE, Special Education Information System, a web-based special education IEP system is implemented. We are still, we're doing a lot of staff development. We are still working with teachers on using it appropriately. But we, I can go on and check a student or a caseload and have immediate information on a student. And when their IEP is due and what was on the IEP. We completed our special education self-review, SESRC, Student Corrective Actions. That started last spring, continued this fall. If you want to know how many mistakes you can make on an IEP from writing to implementation, this is how many. This was our self-review, that thick. We did sixty-five of those little files. I'll talk about that more than, later. We did staff development on those findings. Our special ed coordinators are doing their jobs, are working with principals, are supporting staff, they're helping with evaluations. They're sitting in IEP meetings that are requiring attention of someone that can, and it's part of the law, someone that can provide information on resources of the district. What's not done is that advisory committee oversight. Our special ed self-review started last spring, as I said. We reviewed sixty-five files that was required by the state on all those multiple compliance items. We had fifty-nine corrective actions, those are completed. Each student who had any non-compliance, we had to do, either have an IEP or do some kind of correction for that. We have ten areas of systemic correction, which are due March thirty-first, and those will be done. So that's FICMAT, that's self-review, that's compliance, there's more. We are in the information age. Did Jess, Jess, I don't know if he's staying, he's right here? Oh, yes, you're such a supporter. I want to call it the misinformation age. Because you can go on the internet, and I did, and I put in Google, special education, and they tell you how many little, you know, things you can go through. Eighty million, six hundred thousand. I put autism in, two million, two hundred thousand little pieces of information. Special education and litigation, four hundred and forty thousand things. Some of it, California Department of Education, great, universities and so forth. But there are a variety of pieces of information, and I get many letters that quote parts of the law that don't exist or misunderstood. Parents get their information, parents seek information. So where are they going to go? They're going to go to the internet. Does a USD special ed department have a great webpage? No. There are also chat rooms. This was something new when I came back into special ed. When I left, there were not chat rooms that I was aware of. There are now chat rooms. Here's one of the things they were chatting about. Which has a better autism program, San Ramon or Alameda? Autism. In California, since nineteen ninety-three, a fourteen-hundred percent increase. The needs of children with autism are in multiple domains, as I mentioned earlier. In the state, thirty-six percent of litigation is around autism. Personnel shortages, I've talked about this before. Speech therapists, it's nationwide, it's both in the medical and the educational system. I've talked to our lovely young contracted speech therapists, of which we pay about triple, not triple, about a third more than we would our own, and talked to them about, you know, school districts, how great it is to be a school district employee, and what a great retirement system we have. And they look at me like I have grown another head. They have student loans, and they have children, and they want to buy a house, and having a great retirement system is not on their agenda. One hundred percent of our new teachers are on intern, our new moderate severe, teachers of the moderate severe students, our most intensive students are on intern permits or intern credentials. They need a lot of support. Even first-year teachers with all their credentials need a lot of support, but when you're an intern and you're just learning yourself, you need tremendous amount of support. And this is, I don't see any change in this. Most, I think about seventy percent of all of our teachers, resource specialists, whatever, are either on special permits, out-of-state teaching licenses, or are their interns. And we have open positions that remain vacant today. And we can't say to a parent, sorry, we don't have anybody in that position, so we're not going to do it. If we do, then we, we did that last year when our speech therapist left or went on leave, and we had to say, we'll offer compensatory education, which we did during the summer. The biggest growing group is the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old population that normally would have graduated from high school, but now are not because of the KC. And that's going to be the biggest source of litigation coming down the pike. So what's going on with litigation in Alameda? It continues. That's what I do. If you want to know what your special ed director's doing, she's talking to the lawyer. We have twenty-seven students that I counted, there are probably more, seventeen with attorneys, many IEPs, you're sitting with your attorney and their attorney. Ten with advocates, so I put that in the litigation, they're in, you know, poised. Four of the students never attended Alameda Unified School District, but we serve all students who live in Alameda. And they can sue us if they don't feel we're offering them special education program. Fifty-four percent of our litigation is around autism. One hundred percent of all students with attorney, well, one hundred percent of all students, hopefully, but one hundred percent of all students that are in this litigation arena had defensible offers in oh seven, oh eight. We had two hearings in oh seven, we prevailed in both on all issues. And we are in federal litigation with two students. Hopefully, one, as of today, will be dismissed, and we're going for dismissal on the other. Litigation is a three hundred and sixty-five-day calendar. My office is a legal office. And if we get a filing on July first, and if the director happens to be on vacation and the coordinator is running summer school, and the other coordinator position is not full, the time clock starts. And if you miss it, you are then have committed what my attorney calls a fatal error, and you are now negotiate with that parent instead of litigate. So we have to run our office. We got a, we got a filing on the twenty-eighth of December. I returned on the third, so I have fifteen days to respond, so, and it's calendar days. Okay, recommendations for implementation. This chart was presented last year. In oh six, oh seven, my first year, right away, we looked at the autism program, we had autism preschool students coming out of our ears, and we added a class. And when I presented, came last year, we also, I inherited one point six full-time equivalent for teacher on special assignments that came out of school closures, and a point six FTE for a non-public school psychologist in response to the FICMAT reports, recommendation that we deal with non-public schools was added. That happened in oh six, oh seven. Last year, we added a K-five autism program. We, I asked for an educational specialist, we weren't sure where that need was, it turned out to be in the area of Asperger's, which is cousin to autism, high-functioning. Students generally are academically very, very capable, but socially have huge challenges. We added a class there at the middle school level. We also, last year, lost an FTE, a half of an FTE for teacher on special assignment because resource specialist caseloads were increasing. And there is a caseload requirement the state has on resource specialists. We changed over from program specialist to coordinators. I believe that our IEPs and our work with principals is much improved because of that, just because of the different job description. For oh eight, oh nine, this is what I anticipate. I believe that our current programs for special populations are okay. At this point, we're halfway through the year, a lot of things happen in the spring. People move in. I'm waiting for the triplets with autism to move in, that will throw our whole program off. And so I think we're okay there. And we had, we know, because we've been in hearing, that our programs are defensible. Specialized staffing, at this point, sort of a teacher or education specialist to provide support, I think we're okay at this point. But again, we just need to reevaluate this all the time as these population groups change. I would, to support all these intern teachers, to replace that FTE of teacher on special assignment for behavior intervention and intern teachers, and this isn't just special ed teachers. Our one person that is doing the behavior support came late to a meeting, said she was spending time with a kindergarten teacher. A student who's being assessed, doesn't look like that student is going to be eligible, we can't find a disability, but he definitely has behavior issues. And the biggest area that we absolutely need to address is our school psychologists. And I will, assessment is the basis for what all of our offers are. Part of our corrective action for our self-review is that we will meet our triennial timelines. Ever since I became into special ed administration in nineteen ninety-five, every self-review we've had, we've been out of compliance for triennials. And the psychologists are the key to that. Our FICMAT report, one of their big recommendations, reduce legal costs by performing thorough assessments. We have excellent school psychologists. They are inundated with referrals, with needy students, with complicated students. Very, one of my psychologists said, what happened to the students with learning, the simple students with learning disabilities? Everybody has multiple issues, and we have to assess in all areas. FICMAT said, provide counseling services so you can help maybe stave off some of your non-public school services or some of the more expensive mental health issues. And actually, we do not have the staffing to provide that, and as we currently are. We need to add psychologists to increase our recruitment and retention. We have a window in March, April, where we actually could hire some psychologists. Our current staffing ratio is nineteen fifty-seven to one, nineteen hundred fifty-seven students to one psychologist in the K-12. The state ratio is fourteen oh nine. By adding the two point two, we'd beat about four forty-seven, I think it is. One of the things not any people know is the psychologists are responsible for assessing any Alameda private school student suspected of having a disability. And I regularly get letters from parents of students in private schools, residents of Alameda, or even non-residents of Alameda but going to private schools in Alameda, and saying they think their child has a disability. Our school psychologists and speech therapists and teachers assess those students. I went to the phone book, and there are twelve schools, big and small, that are in Alameda. And we have to do child find for all those schools. By the way, there's no individual right to special education if you're in private school, but we have to offer FAP from the public school setting. Our school psychologists provide mental health support to the whole school site, including some of the staff. And if there's an individual or a school-wide crisis, our school psychologists are pulled to go serve that. Those timelines that we have to meet for our assessments continue, whether or not those things happen. And as an alternative, we have this year, a third-year intern program. This is Alana Novak, our senior psychologist, idea, and we tried it out. Fortunately for us, we did, because if we didn't, our cost overrun would be greater because our third-year school, our intern psychologists are picking up some of that missing psychologist work. We're still having to contract out some of it. But it caused, the cost there is for the senior psychologist to supervise those, and we get those third-year interns at twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. The bad, the downside is, if they had to testify in court, they'd have to say they're an intern psychologist. And they change every year. You have one year to be a third-year intern, and then you get your license, and then you are employable. So it doesn't provide for program continuity. But it is a short-term gap, and one that I think needs to be strongly considered. And many of our schools also put in money for interns to help their school sites. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Comments?
Just make a comment.
It's Mike.
So you said this presentation is the good, the bad, and the ugly. So the only thing I can see that's good on this, which is, really wasn't specifically the thing, is apparently you're retiring at the end of the year.
I am. How long, hon? Five months and five days.
Five months and five days. Was that the only good part of the presentation that you actually looked forward to, or what?
No. It's, no, that's the problem. I think that there are, we have some fabulous special ed teachers that are my age or just slightly younger, and that is an issue in special education. And I will say, and I've said to my staff, it was my intention to go an extra year, but life's too short. And I have grandchildren that are growing up very fast, so I made that decision. But the good, I think, is that I think on some of our FICMAT things with parents, with communication with staff, with staff morale, I think we are making progress.
The problem with, with teachers coming and leaving and, I mean, I, let me just address that. Are we doing any type of follow-through, like an exit survey as to why people are leaving and how, what they think of our district, how could we improve? Because certainly, they have the choices out there. People leave and they go to a neighboring district. I mean, certainly money is one thing, but there's other things that a lot of people's, if you want to stay in a district, it's because you, you feel committed to, you enjoy working with the district. It's a district that...
We've certainly been able to recruit some teachers who are Alameda residents. We lured a teacher away from a district that actually pays more back to Alameda because she was an Alameda resident. Generally, I think we could do a better job of actually having some focused questions on why people are leaving. But the ones that I know of, they leave for a lot of reasons. They, you know, move out of the area, those kinds of reasons. But the ones that stay in the area, it's one of two things. It's for higher pay, and the older you are, that gets more attractive, and districts do pay full service, I mean, full years, and so you're increasing your retirement. The other is, we have some families that live out, really out of the, I mean, when I say really out of the area, like Walnut Creek or out in that area. And those districts are hiring, they pay more, and many times their children can go to a school district out there that's closer than, say, come bringing them here. So those seem to be the two biggies.
I, I do think it's good to try to gather some of that information.
I agree. I agree.
Rosalind, could I just clarify, the eight hundred and seven hundred thousand dollar anticipated general fund increase for special ed in oh seven, oh eight, doesn't, actually, because, as I'm saying this, it's oh eight, oh nine, the two eighty-five governor's cut in special ed, that's for oh eight, oh nine, and so, I realize I'm mixing apples and oranges.
Right, okay. Well, the, the, the eight hundred and some thousand, that has to do with our missing employees. So speech therapists are the biggest chunk, but we have had to contract out for psycho- So speech therapists are the biggest chunk, but we have had to contract out for psychological services. We've had to contract out. We were able to hire an OT, an Alameda resident, but we still are continuing to increase because students have all these needs for occupational therapy. And the other is children with autism, one of the problems with the disability is they don't generalize. In other words, if you teach me something in school, like to tie my shoes, for example, and then I can go home and do it at home if I don't have a disability or if I have some other disability. Children with autism don't generalize, so they often have to have in-home programs. And the courts have said, yes, you will provide them. So those have expanded. So those are the, those reasons. If the governor cuts special education, it does not cut our responsibility. The courts say that it, you know, you will provide the service.
Do you know to what extent other districts are looking at suing? I understand it's a long-term solution or potential solution, but.
I know that before I became a principal, there was quite a push. There was a district here in California that had a case that just the services alone was some huge amount of money, a couple million dollars, just the services alone. And that district almost went under and they used that, the, this group used that as an example of this funding issue. And I know there are groups out there, I don't know about suing, but I know there are groups. And in fact, they did testify at the last reauthorization and that's when the federal government went from seven percent to like fifteen percent. Double, but only it's, you know, not, it's such a deficit.
And I'm not sure the state passed all of that through.
Well, our, our state, I mean, different states do different things, but our state doesn't really pass through all the money. They keep chunks of it and let districts, you know, hang in the wind as far as I'm concerned.
And do you have any way to hang a number or impact on the eighteen to twenty-two issue? That's, I, I can see why that's coming down the pike.
We have approximately, one of the teachers on special assignment, in addition to supporting transition, has been working on this. And she has a caseload, when I say caseload, she has a list of students that she's monitoring that's right now about twenty-five students. Now, that's a resource specialist caseload. But those students are adults. We work with them, not their parents and much to their parents' chagrin. And they have multiple needs. Some of the eighteen-year-olds stay for another year of high school, which they can. Many don't want to do that or after they've done it for a year, they're still not passing the KC or the credits. So we connect them with a variety of transition services, college of Alameda, et cetera. It takes a lot, less instructional time and more facilitation time. And she's keeping track of that, but that's eventually, I mean, right now, it's almost a full-time job, which she's doing as, you know, maybe.
We're, we're only at a year or so into this problem.
We are a year or so into this problem, right.
And it's just gonna grow.
It is absolutely going to grow. And so there's two sides to that coin. This is where all of us own this. And that is on the educational benefit side, we need to do everything we can to make sure that students have the core curriculum and get the instruction they need to pass the KC and get all their credits and graduate, because when they get a diploma, we're done. And so that's on that side. On the other side, there are going to be students with mild to moderate disabilities that typically in the past either got a waiver, got a diploma, got, you know, something different that they were done, that aren't going to get it. And one of my little website visitations was a lawyer's prediction that this is going to be the largest area of litigation. And we've already had two students that have come back, their parents dragged, drug them back. One litigated against us, we settled, he was a special ed student. One was a non-special ed student, and this is where the big litigation's going to come. If we have teachers that sent an email with a student's name and say, what's wrong with this child? Do they have Tourette's to quote? And then that student doesn't get their high school diploma, we have a student record of suspected disability. And there's something in the law that says you knew or should have known the child had a disability and you're required to assess them and provide services.
So, and one of the things I understand you've been doing is working a lot closer with principals to own.
Yes.
Special education.
The coordinators and I have been working very diligently with them. I met with six, twelve principals today. And we really have tried to be a team with the principals. It is a very slippery slope. Special education has its own little unique way about it. And if you're an educator, you may not be up to date, but I think all of our principals are very good about contacting us and working with us. We're trying to help them, support them in evaluation because you may not know what an autism class should look like. And the teacher may be doing a dynamite job, but it might not look like any other teaching you've ever seen. Or you may go in there and they may not be doing a very good job and it may look okay to you. So we've really been trying to support them.
And, and sorry, one final question. Did I hear you correctly that our percentage of general fund, or general fund as a percentage of expenditures is the lowest in the SALPA?
In the SALPA, of course, we have a district, which, which we're named, it has a fifty-three percent contribution from their district. I think in the Bay Area, around thirty percent is average. In the state, it's about twenty-four, twenty-five percent in the state. But there's some, some districts that are in rural, you know, California that have very few special ed students. But in our SALPA, we are the lowest. But it's, we may exceed another district with our speech therapy issue.
Thank you.
Janet?
What's been the background on the advisory committee and getting, not getting that started or?
It seems like every time I start, I get a filing and then everything stops because I have a very short timeline to deal with that file. Literally, I, I get a filing or a letter. We have to do prior written notice on any kind of parent request. And literally, that, well, the first thing in the fall was the self-review. Took a huge amount of hours to do the self-review. So that was the first thing. And then the second thing is time. I just can't seem to touch it in a, you know, sixty to eighty-hour week.
I'd like to share something. I recently met with two parents, special ed parents. And when Rosalind took the job, there was a special ed parent group that was extremely upset with our communication and what we were doing and how it was working. And these two parents came to tell me that they were very upset that Rosalind was leaving and that in fact, they had seen major change in the communication and interaction and support for special ed students and wanted someone just like her to come.
A little younger.
Replace her. And I talked about cloning being illegal and I can't hold her prisoner either.
That's why I brought my husband.
But I really, I really think that the, the work that she's done with our, our parents is praiseworthy.
Thank you. Well, we have met with many parents and I, I, one of the things of getting it, I said in special education, is parents come to the table totally from an emotional perspective. And I've been on both sides of the table as a parent and as a, as a teacher and administrator. And what is absolutely needed is time. We need the coordinators to have time, the director to have time. I spent an hour on the phone with an advocate this morning. And if you don't take the time, that's when all the, the negative things come. The negative things are there because the emotion, Ken Moses is a writer that wrote on the grieving process of parents with children with disabilities. The blame, denial, bargaining, all of that. But it doesn't progress in any kind of linear fashion that if you're, someone in your family dies, it circles. So it circles through preschool and then you get the next developmental stage. And so I'd had a parent call me at the beginning of the year when we didn't have a staff member at, for her son, at her son's site. And she was very upset. We spent a lot of time talking. She finally calmed down and she says, I know you have a tough job. I know these, these personnel problems are, you know, across the board. I really feel for you. But with my child, I do not care. And they shouldn't care. They shouldn't have to care whether we have the funds or resources because their dream of the child that would, you know, have a, a life without a disability is gone, is dead.
Rosalind, I will, I just comment here rather than at a later point. The Tracy and Mike and I, well, I don't know if all of us were at the Special Olympic.
Oh, Saturday?
This one, I've made prior ones.
And, and of course, we're surrounded with, with all of our students. And there were still some of my students that I had when I was a special ed teacher and got started in the special ed, Special Olympics program who were there. But there was one young girl, and she's going to be, maybe Tracy will say something about it later, but on Alameda Currents, she, she did an interview. And she's a junior at Alameda High School. And so for all the, the struggles that you have and that parents have and we have to, to have kids mainstreamed and involved and, and give them the support, this, this young gal and her, her mother, they were so happy, not only at her participation at the bowling alley, but the fact that, that at Alameda High, she, and she's more severely handicapped, but she's, you know, so fully mainstreamed that she's a part of the, the girls' basketball team. And, and she was a junior class, a princess for the junior prom. So, so we have come a long way and there are many people that, students that are benefiting from it and parents that appreciate it. But I understand exactly the, the parents, if you especially, if you have a severely handicapped child, you begin struggling way before school starts in, in the first or second year of life and, and it does circle, it goes on because you want the best and we want the best, but.
And I think we're doing an amazing job. I, I really, I've been at a lot of IEPs where general ed teachers have been at the IEP. It's one of the big four requirements for IEP structures. And our general ed teachers are fabulous. In my experience in IEPs, they get it. They are inclusive. They have ideas on how to help the child be in the, and some of them are, including students that are very severely disabled. And I've been, I, having taught in high school when the law had just passed and the sort of like, no, you can't make us do that attitude that was prevalent then to now, how do we do it? Let's fix it, let's do it. And I would say our class that we added, the autism class, the K five class at Henry Haight, that's the supported inclusion, has provided many of our students who were struggling in inclusion with that additional support. The bridge program for the Asperger's program has been wildly successful. So we're, I think we're doing some very, very good things with our students.
Rosalind, I'd like to echo Ardella's statement. Yeah. And thank you for all the wonderful service that you brought to the.
I haven't, I haven't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I have a couple of questions about the presentation.
Okay.
The thirty-four percent of general fund expenditures, is that comparable to prior years? Is there a trend here?
Uh, the trend is up. I think last year it was twenty-eight, you remember? Yeah.
So, I mean, it's going up.
As we are.
Staff, but that's not really, it's gonna go up even though, just because of the nature of the disabilities and that.
I think two things are driving it up. The, one, well, certainly if the governor cuts the thing, then it'll really go up. But I think in general, as we've been struggling to hire staff and we have to provide the service regardless of availability, we have to go out to contractors that are quite a bit more expensive. And the second thing is our, our number of students is not increasing, our percentage, like we have, we're about a little under, just a little over ten percent. But the complexity of the needs has hugely increased. And the law also changed. It used to be we kind of assessed, okay, you're eligible, you know, and that's, we were done with the assessment. Now it's in all areas of need. And, and parents, because they can go on the internet and understand and get into chat rooms, and they're coming to us much more informed about, you know, what's available, what other, what's happening in other districts. I mean, we have parents that scan and PDF their IEPs to each other so they know what other people are getting.
With regard to the staffing, the, the contracted, clarify, the contracted district speech, are those, those are our contracts for speech therapists? And then IEP-based private speech, what's the difference between?
Well, some, some students have a higher need for a level of service. So we do, I think we have a student with four days a week of speech therapy. And so one way to deal with that, because even the contracted speech therapist can't necessarily provide that. We get into agreements with parents that they already are paying for their own two days and so we agree to pay for another two days. And that's the private speech therapist.
Well, I'm looking at the difference, the six hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference between oh six, oh seven and oh seven, oh eight. And is this, it's not clear here, but this is because of a combination of the fact that we have more private IEP and less staff speech therapists, fewer staff speech therapists.
It's a combination between less district speech therapists and students require more complicated kinds of services.
Private IEP.
Well, the IEPs are public, they're not private, but the parents.
What you call for IEP-based private speech.
Right. On the IEP, the parent comes to us with an IEP and we say we're gonna offer two thirty-minute sessions of speech therapy. That's, the district speech therapist says that's the offer. Parent says, I'm already paying for an hour a week and I, I and my advocate believe that, you know, we should have another hour. And they bring assessments to support this because everything's driven by assessments. There are students for whom we agree to pay a portion of what they're paying privately, so maybe an hour.
If we didn't have, how many, how many on staff, private, or on staff speech therapists would we need to get rid of the nine contracted district?
Nine.
Speech therapists.
Nine.
Nine. So, so.
It's actually eight point six or something like that.
So how many total speech therapists in staff does this district?
Thirteen.
Okay, that's what we should have. Thirteen staff, speech therapist.
Yeah.
And what would that cost? Would that cost nine hundred and fifty-nine or?
No, it would cost about six, it would cost about three hundred thousand.
Then wouldn't, why can't we increase the salaries to?
That's a negotiated item. I'm sorry, I can't answer.
Exactly. I mean, but wouldn't that be, wouldn't that make sense to save three hundred thousand dollars by increasing a salary?
It's my understanding there's efforts on that.
Okay. I mean, is that true, Lori? I, I hope that we're looking at that at least because it seems like if we can offer competitive or better than competitive salary, then we would have a better opportunity to recruit.
I think the, there's two separate pieces. There is a looking and an initial discussion that, about speech therapist, special ed and recruitment issues with AEA, our, our teacher group, but there hasn't been a negotiation, looking at it in terms of actual negotiations of the item. Because that would come up when the contract comes up for renewal potentially.
Isn't there any opportunity in between contracts to?
Yeah, that, that's the discussion mode. And, and then we could come to look at it. So we've had.
Between the, we don't have to negotiate a new contract in order to raise any salary.
No.
For a certain class, right? Okay, well, that's just my suggestion, since it seems like that would be, if we could increase it by five or ten thousand and, and recruit more people, we could save a few hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Bill, I'd like to move that we extend the meeting beyond ten thirty.
I have a motion to extend. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. And also, well, I guess I was gonna ask if the, if the litigation is going, but you pretty much covered that. Thanks, Rosalind. Thanks for, thanks for everything.
Okay, we have one speaker, Trish Spencer.
Good evening. I had a daughter, it's hard to believe now, Rosalind, ten years ago, at Woodstock Child Development Center when Ms. Davenport was there. And I too wanted to thank her for all of her work and dedication to our students here. But, but with my daughter, she had been receiving special services from age three by the county. And then she went through Woodstock Child Development Center and was mainstreamed at Head Start. And then when she started kindergarten, she had an IEP providing for services, including speech. And I know when she started kindergarten that the speech started because of communication with the speech teacher. But then at the end of my child's kindergarten year, when I was meeting with the teacher because she wanted. I was meeting with the teacher, because she wanted to retain my child, she said that she would really suggest that my daughter receive speech. And I was very surprised because my daughter had been receiving speech from age three. And when I brought that to their attention, then, you know, they were just like, well, we need to do, you know, we need to look at your IEP now, and hurry up and get it all taken care of and whatnot. And I know that because my daughter didn't receive speech for that critical year in kindergarten, and we all know that if you want to receive the services as early as possible, that they have the most impact. At this point, when my daughter's still in eighth grade, we have issues, and she's, still qualifies for speech, except her GPA is so high that she's no longer eligible. So it's very, it was a very fortunate circumstance, and, and I know Ms. Davenport has spent a lot of time trying to work on communication with parents and computerizing the system. And my concern is really, is would this new system catch something like that, so that not only would staff have been aware that my daughter had an IEP, that it was not being implemented, but is there a way that parents could have checked? Because if I could have gone on to the computer like I can for my other kids and see what grades they're getting, if I could have done that for my daughter that was getting speech, I think, you know, I would have checked that like I check all of her regu, all the other classes, and known that she didn't receive services. And I'm curious if the system that's being implemented would have allowed, would allow something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last item, board member comments. Board member reports. David?
Nothing to report.
Janet?
I already commented on the, the Special Olympics, and, and of course, the other thing is the, the Alameda Youth Collaborative, and, and we talked about that, too, so I think I, I will pass.
Tracy?
Um, with regard to the Youth Collaborative, I understand that the, the Youth Commission, the Alameda Youth Commission has been, has been chosen, and they will have their first meeting in a couple of days. And so I'll be real interested, I know the board and the community will be real interested to hear what's going on with the newly established Alameda Youth Commission. Janet mentioned earlier the Special Olympics. It was so rewarding, as always, and as Janet mentioned, I filmed about a half an hour and interviewed a number of people who were participating, including twenty-five-year Special Olympic participants as well, or thirty-year participants, as well as the, the wife of the founder, Barbara Capon, as well as the current director of Special Olympics for Alameda, Debbie O'Bruad. And I'm going to have that as a segment of Alameda Currents, probably on the thirty-first of this month, Thursday, the thirty-first, at seven-thirty, channel thirty-one. Finally, I did have a chance recently to see a presentation by the superintendent of San Leandro School District, Christine Lim, and her staff about San Leandro's equity activities. It was very exciting. They're really moving forward. Their districts, we're all, we all have diverse districts. Our district has a higher proportion of African-American, lower achieving especially, and Hispanic students, and that's what they've been focused on. They're, the, I'll just mention a couple of things that they're doing. They have staff leadership at all schools. All schools have a staff leader, usually the principal. It's very interesting. They have required teacher participation at all sites, and they have direct attention, especially at the high school level, to male youth who are at risk of dropping out, direct personal attention. And it's working. Their results, they've seen the African-American, what I recall, one, one particular result, and then I'll close, is that the African-American females have a higher passage rate for the exit exam than does the district, which is really tremendous. So it's really interesting, and I'm sure Ardilla knows a lot more about it than I do, but I was glad to be able to part, to see the, the presentation and ask some questions.
Mike?
I briefly mentioned it during the technology presentation, that I attended the kickoff of the Technology Steering Committee meeting. And one of the things that did come up as a potential lead for interested Alameda Currents videographers, who may be sitting in the room, was the fact that some of the activities that the teachers are doing in terms of being able to apply the technology and stuff, is in need of a recording of that activity so that they can share it with the other teachers. And so maybe there's opportunities for people who are engaged in extracurricular activities of videotaping and stuff, that maybe they could do an Alameda Currents segment on teaching in the classrooms and technology, and then, you know, give it back to the district in order for them to share it, because I could, you could see a synergy of, of programs there. So that's about it.
My only comment I too was at the Special Olympics. It was a wonderful event, and I enjoyed it immensely. And with that, I shall close the, adjourn, adjourn the meeting.